Good evening, I call to order the August ninth, twenty twenty-three, City of Calabasas regularly scheduled council meeting. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Protem Weintraub, Council members Albrecht, Bizagin, and Kraut, as well as our city attorney, our city manager, and staff present tonight, and of course, our city clerk, Mari Hernandez. If you'd like to provide public comment on our in-person, as many of you are, please complete a speaker card in the back of the room and give it to our city clerk seated right over here up front. If you're joining us via Zoom, please press raise hand or star nine if you're joining via phone, and star six to unmute yourself when the item you'd like to comment on is presented. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for all communication and public comment. When you're called upon to speak, please state your name, the city you live in, and you'll be allowed up to three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this council. Tonight, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance be led by our very own CHP Captain Adam Smith. I give you, I'm sorry, Lieutenant, I, see, I got that right, please lead us. Thank you.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Uh, the presentation, as the agenda indicates of this, by the Sheriff's J Team, will be rescheduled for the August twenty-third council meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda with this modification?
Set moved.
Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. We met in closed session prior to this meeting. Does the city attorney have anything to report out?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council met in closed session to consider three items. Uh, one of anticipated litigation related to the city's consideration of story polls policy modification request. Second, conference of wheel property negotiator regarding two seven zero four zero Malibu Hills Road. And third, conference of legal counsel regarding existing litigation, T and H Canyon Oaks LLC versus City of Calabasas. The council provided direction to staff and counsel and took no reportable actions on any item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll start out tonight's meeting, we are adjourning in memory of a longtime resident and very active community member, well, well-respected and appreciated, not just by our council here tonight, but by the entire community, and that's Peter Valk, who was proud to serve as a Traffic and Transportation Commissioner for the Calabasas community from June sixteen nineteen ninety-seven until his passing. Joining us tonight are, are his wife, Maura Valk, their daughters Dana Branzy and Tanya Martin. Peter was a man who was inspired and achieved a life filled with positivity, integrity, sustainability, and the highest morals, compassion, generosity, and love and respect for every human being and creature. His wife felt honored and privileged to enjoy his last inning as his wife and soulmate. Pete, you fought your disease for twenty-five years so gallantly, positively, and with such fortitude. His impact on Earth, and especially in Calabasas, will be felt by so many for a very long time. He left a legacy for his family and our community we can always all be proud of. And before I go on, I'd like to ask if there are council comments. I know we all had good relationships, long relationships with Peter and the family as well. Uh, Councilmember Bizagin?
Yes, I met Peter, uh, I was, I just on the council a couple of months when he started his commission service. And, uh, he was one of the most dedicated and outstanding commissioners we've had. He's, he served longer than almost anybody in the city, and, uh, it was very sad to hear of his passing. Um, he was very pro-city. He was at almost all of our events, active participant. And, uh, I'm sure that, that, uh, the commission will miss him. I will miss him on a personal level, and I want to wish his family condolences.
Thank you. Councilman, Mayor Protem Weintraub?
I'm so sorry for your loss. I remember when I joined the council and I was going through who all of the commissioner was, and I was reading Peter's bio, and I just could not get over how lucky the city was to have somebody of his stature and, um, his skill serve the community. We were all so lucky, and I know what a tremendous loss this is for you personally, and please accept our condolences.
Councilmember Kraut?
Again, I want to extend my condolences and, and more extend my appreciation for sharing him with the community here. Um, I had a chance to serve with him on the General Plan Advisory Committee back in, what, twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen, something like that, and, uh, you know, he was always very insightful, uh, very, uh, thoughtful, um, very dedicated to this community. And, uh, you know, when I had a chance to, here on council to, uh, to reappoint him to the commission, uh, there wasn't a question in anybody's mind. Uh, he's just been such an asset to our community, and we're all gonna miss him.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht?
It was quite a surprise to me. Um, I didn't know Peter very well until I started serving on the Public Safety Commission. And, uh, there are so many people in this city I've known for many, many years, and I understand, uh, their relationship to the city, but Peter was new to me. Uh, but we did have a, uh, commission meeting where we, uh, public safety shared with, uh, traffic, uh, and transportation, and, uh, it was amazing, uh, the skill sets he had, his, uh, approach, his sense of intellect. Um, I really admired him, uh, and I wish I had gotten to know him better, uh, earlier, so, uh, it was quite a surprise. He always looked healthy to me. I didn't, uh, it was, it's, it's a loss. So, I'm sorry for your loss.
And I'll just add, I started on my first commission just about the same time as Peter, and I used to spend a lot of time chatting and seeing each other, trying to, he was always positive, always, as you've indicated, and just, just cared greatly for the city and, and to, to make sure he could make a positive, important difference in the city, and he did so. Uh, I used to spend time on Monroe Road at the old city hall, and then, of course, here, but, uh, just, just on top of things, always aware and always caring, not talking about his own struggles or his own fight, but caring about the community, and uh, we all send our deep, deepest, deepest thoughts, prayers, love for him and your family, and thank you for having, letting us have him for all those years as well. And, um, I do have a certificate. Before I do so, is, is there anyone who wishes to speak in the public or, uh, okay? Please come up to the mic, the podium.
Well, I think you've said it all. Pete was very, very proud of serving for the Calabasas community. And he is a loss that will be felt by everybody, but he, the legacy that he left for his family and his friends will be felt forever. I thank you for all your kind words about him. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public? Before you sit down, I'll come and give the certificate otherwise. Are there any?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. All right, we'll move on to presentations. Uh, we'll start with the Sheriff's Crime Report, May and June twenty twenty-three, and we have Deputy DeMeteo, uh, to present the report. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Uh, yeah, I am Deputy DeMeteo of the Los Hills Sheriff's Station. I will be presenting the crime report for the months of May and June of twenty twenty-three. So for both of these months, we did see a decrease in crime of, uh, roughly eleven percent for each month. However, in the month of June, we did see an increase in residential burglaries. So, let me go ahead and start off by, um, we did have one sexual assault, um, reported. Uh, this report, uh, indicated non-consensual sex from a couple in a dating relationship. The investigation is being handled by the Sheriff's Special Victims Bureau. Uh, we did have two strong-arm robberies. Both were retail-based. Um, loss prevention or employees were assaulted, uh, during the course of these thefts. We did have ten residential burglaries. Nine of the ten occurred in June. Um, homes targeted, uh, in these burglaries are ones that back up to open space such as golf courses, hiking trails, or hillsides. The common theme is backyard entry, um, while targeting the master bedroom. This is a reminder to take every step possible to protect your property. Um, some recommendations include security cameras, uh, act, motion-activated floodlighting, and, um, there is shatterproof window tint for, uh, residential, um, projects, so. Um, there were additional five commercial burglaries, seven vehicle burglaries. Um, that's another reminder to keep valuables out of plain view in your vehicle. Uh, most of those crimes are crimes of opportunity. If a thief sees something they want in your car, they will break your window and get it. They don't see anything, they may, uh, move along. Uh, we did have twelve grand thefts and eleven petty thefts. Um, these range from retail thefts, thefts, um, from hotels, package thefts like porch pirates, mail theft, and the dreaded catalytic converter theft is unfortunately back. Uh, we did have five stolen cars from the city. Uh, there was one arson. Um, this arson occurred on Freedom Drive. A vehicle that was stolen out of the city of Los Angeles was dumped on Freedom Drive and set on fire. Um, and then we did have three domestic violence incidents. Uh, that rounds up the crime report for May and June. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you very much. I'll turn to council for questions or comments, and Mayor Protem Weintraub?
Regarding the open space burglaries, for residents who feel that they're doing everything they can, I know you talked about like the shatterproof glass, but what else can people be doing? I mean, not keeping jewelry in their homes. I mean, what more can people be doing?
Um, there's, there's a couple of things. So, um, a neighborhood watch is a good one. Um, and basically what that is, is it's an organized communication system with your, with your neighbors. So if you don't know your neighbors, get to know your neighbors and look out for each other. Um, that's to prevent it from even happening in the first place. However, if it does happen, if you are the victim of a residential burglary, uh, we do recommend to keep your valuables in a, an industrial-sized safe, not something that's small that they can just take with them or get into very easily with a crowbar or a hammer. Um, an industrial-sized safe, and I recommend not keeping that in your master bedroom. Uh, most of these burglaries, we're seeing that the only room targeted in the house is the master bedroom, because that's where most of the valuables are. So definitely think of a, a different plan.
And my last question is, is it true that they are, they don't want to engage with people? They're trying to come in the home when nobody's there, just to go after, um, the jewelry or money or whatever it is?
Yeah, uh, a majority, if not all, these residential burglaries occur when you're not home. Um, and they're very uh, creative, they're very articulate, they, they really do their research to ensure that you're not home, because they don't want confrontation. They don't want to get caught by the police. Uh, they want a quick entry, they want your valuables, and they want to be gone in two to three minutes, so. Um, yeah, it's, unfortunately, we did recently have a burglary, um, where a resident came home while the burglary was occurring. Um, and when the burglars heard that the resident was home, they, they got out of there pretty fast, but they were unfortunately able to get things of value, so. Um, definitely, if, if you hear somebody in your house, uh, or in your backyard or anything like that, um, get vocal. Don't hide and stay silent. Yell out who's there. Um, and say you're calling the nine-one-one. So, that's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments or questions? Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Deputy, for the report. Uh, I just have a comment, uh, on the, I mean, there's so many burglaries now that are, uh, coming in from open space and from the golf course. I'm wondering on the report, uh, the way it comes out, where it says on the burglary has residential, maybe we could have an extra, uh, subcategory under that, meaning open space, hillside designated a little bit differently, so it's not just bundled into one, so we could track that to see what the trend is.
Those, we sort of, you're not asking, it must be every single one of them. Uh, but I, I, I agree with you. That's like, that's a good point.
Just as a suggestion.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
And I, I would apply the same thing to businesses. So whether there's a group of people that comes in, like for altar, they've come in a, a couple of times already, or, uh, and then there's also individuals that do that. So I don't know if we can separate that, but.
It's also interesting.
Not so much that we know each, each moment it happens, but at least we can see the trend line.
Right. Uh, I mean, that's, the trend is a little, it's a little, uh, interesting, because in May, there was only one residential burglary, and then in June, there was nine. So it goes in, it goes in waves, right? Crimes like residential burglary will go up and down. Um, why do they go up and down? Because one particular crew usually hits, um, a specific city, and then they move on to the next city after a little while. Or they hit a city and they get caught, and then it takes some time for them to get replaced, to come back. So it's, it's, it's interesting. It's, but, um, it's always a work in progress.
Well, in the open space, for example, we're gonna try to apply techniques to reduce that. So, once we can monitor it and see how the trend line is, those techniques are enforced, then we can see that maybe it's having some success factor.
Right. Uh, and I would say almost all of our residential burglaries are through open space. Um, if there are residential burglaries that aren't, it's, uh, it's an incident most likely where the suspect knows the victim, or the suspect has access to the victim's house for some type of work. Um, so those residential, those are unfortunately classified as residential burglaries, but it's more of just like, um, they're trusted to be in that house and a grand theft occurs, but, um, unfortunately, it's classifies that as, as a burglary.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kraut? Uh, yeah, again, I want to say thank you for all of your service here and, and to the rest of the deputies, uh, that have, uh, been taking care of us here. A lot of the same thing, themes keep coming back up. I'm sorry to hear that catalytic converters are back. Is there another date, uh, in the future where we are gonna have a, a service to have etching on the catalytic converters?
We're looking into, um, getting a facility to do that for us right now.
Okay, and you'll keep us posted when that dates set? Thank you very much. Thank you. Councilmember Bizagin?
Um, thank you for the report. I did have a couple of comments, but I think they're more appropriately addressed under item twelve. So I have nothing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my comments and questions really, really covered relating to the open space protection and what we're working on in the city. I know we'll and working on jointly together, so that's something, again, that'll come up later tonight. Uh, thank you, and everyone at the station as well, including, uh, our captain who's here tonight. We are, or, or, sorry, Lieutenant.
You will be here, yes.
Lieutenant. No, yes, just ESPN turnaround. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No one else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very, very much. We appreciate you very much. All right, we'll turn to council announcements and start with Mayor Protem Weintraub.
Two things, just with the start of school coming up soon, just a reminder that things are going to be a little bit hectic around the schools with people getting acclimated to the new school year, increase in traffic, so just to leave a bit early, pay extra attention to what's going on in the road, but if you do see things around the schools that are not typical of regular traffic patterns, please call City Hall. We want to make sure that the issues get addressed right away. So that's number one. And number two, I just want to, um, I know on behalf of our entire city council, we're keeping the residents of Maui in our thoughts and prayers. We've all been through the devastation of a wildfire, so we can empathize what's going on there, and just we offer our support to their community, and we'll keep them in our thoughts.
Very true, well said. Thank you. Councilmember Bizagin?
I, I don't have any announcements. Thank you.
Okay. Did you need to add something? City manager?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, just according to the agenda, I think we overlooked, um, the appointment to the Traffic and Transportation Commission, uh, item number one. So just once, once we're done with, um, council member comments and announcements, we need to go back to that item.
That's actually coming up next. After announcements.
We're good. Go ahead and.
I, I'm going by what Madam Clerk gives me, so. All right, we'll turn to Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you. Just a few announcements, and one, I'm very happy to report on my wing here, I noticed that on Park Aura, uh, there is, uh, the beginning of hillside remediation. Uh, that's been down and blocking the sidewalk, uh, since the rainy season. So, uh, tractor was there, and, uh, hopefully, uh, in the next month or so, or sooner, uh, whatever they're gonna do, uh, to open that sidewalk and remediate, uh, the hillside, uh, we're all looking forward to that. Um, I brought something with me also that, uh, came in the mail today, and that's the brochure for the senior center. And it's a fantastic primer for this upcoming fall season, and I just want to make a note to those that want to, uh, participate. Uh, on page nine is, uh, page ten is actually how you register. There's two ways to do it. One is online, and one is mail-in. Uh, terrific, uh, events, well put together, and I think you'll find some classes in there that would be certainly enjoyable. And, uh, lastly, uh, now that we're getting closer to September, uh, tech help is gonna come at the senior center. Uh, that takes place on Wednesdays between four thirty and seven forty-five, and yours truly will be there. I'm trying to learn how to use Dropbox and become an expert on Google Drive and all of that, so, um, see me in September, and I'll be an expert, I hope. So, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Kraut?
Uh, thank you. I'm sure we're gonna hear, uh, an echo of this during the, uh, public comment period, but I don't want it to be missed, uh, a week from tomorrow, Thursday, September, uh, Thursday, August seventeenth, we're having the, uh, mayor's luncheon hosted by the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. Thank you very much. And if you're looking for details on that, that'll be at the Calabasas Country Club at eleven thirty. You can find details at the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce website.
I won't joke and say BYOP, right? Bring your, okay. I just want to congratulate our staff. Last week, uh, we had a fantastic concert, probably one of the, the biggest, the biggest turnout we've had in many years at the, uh, lake by the tennis center, swimming tennis center for a concert, and a big thank you to our uh, community services staff for their great job in putting that on and always doing such a great job. Our next concert, final concert of the summer, will be there August twenty-seventh at six PM, and it'll be R and B in Motown, so that's fun. Um, I just want to mention, because many people get their news from CNN or Fox or whatever it might be, I get mine from Sees Candy. So, uh, this month, August, is known as Doggust. For those dogs who don't have apparently known birthdays, they celebrate this month, and the uh, the ASPCA, hopefully I got that right, uh, is taking, uh, they're involved with taking donations, I guess, every time you go to Sees. So I'm not promoting for Sees, I just thought it was cute. I did not know that about Doggust. And last but not least, we have a couple of birthdays this past week, so I want to acknowledge our city attorney, and of course, Councilmember Kraut on their birthdays, and wish, we won't sing, we'll just wish you a happy birthday. All right, we'll move on to now, uh, as our city manager so correctly brought up, a very special item tonight, that's consideration and approval of appointment of Adam Smith to the Traffic and Transportation Commission by, uh, Councilmember Kraut, and that's Lieutenant Adam Smith, uh, who I would ask you to please welcome yourself and introduce yourself, uh, my neighbor down the street, and who I often see at Love East in the city.
Yes, well, thank you. My name's Adam Smith. I've been a resident of, uh, Calabasas, specifically Calabasas Hills Community for, uh, five years now. And, uh, uh, as you know, I do work for CHP, but I'm here tonight as a, uh, private citizen and a resident of Calabasas, and I'm excited to be able to just give back to the community and help out where I can.
Very exciting, and I'll ask if there are any council comments or questions at this time. Councilmember Kraut? Councilmember Albrecht?
Excited to learn that you're, uh, with the CHP.
Yeah.
So, uh, we feel very comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to them.
Thank you.
And to us.
Councilmember Kraut? I just gotta say, I was, we had an opening in the, uh, commission. I was given an application or two, and it was pretty obvious your qualifications, uh, from your, your day job is certainly going to be a great asset to our city. Uh, and I want to say thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Protem Weintraub?
Thank you for stepping up to serve.
Uh, Councilmember Bizagin?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm thrilled you're stepping up. You've been asking for years how you can get involved in the city, especially with our youth. Uh, so there's more, more to be done, I know, on your end, and, and, uh, I'm very excited. So now I will ask officially for a motion to approve the appointment of Adam Smith to the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Can I second my own appointment?
You sure can.
Moving and seconding, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, and now we will ask you to raise your right hand, and I will swear you in. All right. I can't do that. All right, I, state your name.
I, Adam Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And just lastly, I want to say thank you to Mark Silverman, because he really encouraged me as well, and I'm happy to be his neighbor, so thank you to everyone. I appreciate.
And I thank you too, Mark. Don't pull him over. No, no. All right, we turn now, before we turn to all communication, public comment, uh, I'm looking to the birthday boy, our city attorney, to say something.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, we have a number of topics that I think have generated some public interest in it by reading the emails and communications in advance, and I'll just sort of lay out a little ground rules. So, general public comment, the portion now is commentary on anything not on the agenda, which would include any concerns regarding the planning commission composition and/or the proposed Caruso project behind us and/or the Cruzan project on the other side. The projects themselves are not on the tonight's agenda, neither Cruzan nor Caruso, so any comments about them are welcome, but would be at the general public comment portion of the evening. So too any comments related to the recent changes, change on the planning commission. The agenda item number eleven is a discussion solely of the story polls request for modifications by the Crusoe developer for the Crusoe project, just the story polls. So concerns, commentary, discussions, questions on the story polls component should be reserved for item eleven. General commentary on the project, pro-con, questions, et cetera, would be now at general public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I do have a number of cards for public comment. There may be some individuals online as well. Uh, if you do wish to speak on public comment, again, a non-agendized item, please fill out a card and give it to our city clerk. I see we have longtime members of the community center board here and mayor's youth council, so we have a wide variety in addition to those who are here. Uh, we'll start with public comment from John Suara. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's John Suara, and live in Calabasas. We were shocked at the sudden dismissal of Greg Byrne as a planning commissioner. The council member responsible did not give Greg any prior notice that he was dissatisfied with Greg's performance. He has not spoken to Greg, and he had not spoken to Greg in months. His phone call to Greg came out of the blue and was a complete surprise. Greg Byrne didn't deserve that kind of treatment. Why didn't the commissioner, or the council member, I should say, contact Greg to discuss his concerns? Greg is a professional engineer, she, an engineering geologist, who works on a daily basis with land use issues in the Santa Monica Mountains. That kind of talent is not easily found, and to throw it away is a sin. To obtain insight into this whole situation, the Calabasas Coalition filled out a public request, public records request. We learned that the council member wrote that the planning commission needs a remake, and he criticized other commissioners' behavior and attitude. other commissioners' behavior and attitudes. Fortunately, he did not appoint those commissioners. They are still with us. The council member also wrote an email to Michael Klein, the community development director, that I found concerning. He wrote, and I quote, "The planning commission needs a remake from a variety of perspectives. I'd like to share my list of potential candidates with you and ask that you for your input on potential candidates you have a high regard for." End quote. Unfortunately, the council member feels that he has to turn to staff for direction and approval. That is not why I supported the council member in the recent election. For city council, I mistake, I mistakenly thought he was independent. To summarize, please change the rules to terminate a planning commissioner. One suggestion is to require a council member who is dissatisfied with their appointee to formally meet face to face with their appointee to try to resolve issues before making a decision to terminate. That's good human resources practices, by the way. A second suggestion, in the spirit of transparency, if a council member wants to dismiss their planning commissioner, hold a public hearing of the city council that requires majority vote of the city council to, to remove the planning commission. Please put this on the agenda for future council, for a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is J C Schillen, followed by Joanna Swara, to be read by Denise Miller, if I read that right.
Good evening. My name is J C Schillen. I am a longtime resident and homeowner in Calabasas, and I am an active community member. A majority of the council members should be the decision-making factor in the removal of a commissioner, as it is when a commissioner is appointed, as we just witnessed. Whatever protocols are needed to adapt the current process should be made a priority and placed on the quickest possible agenda. The reason why I'm speaking on this matter off the agenda tonight is that a qualified individual who was appointed to our city's planning commission, Greg Byrne, a geologist with skills and experience, was removed from his position on the planning commission with no oversight. The way it was handled was appalling. Five-minute unscheduled phone call was completely unprofessional. And there were so many better ways, if there was truly a real problem. Um, there's no equivalent for Greg. Uh he's exactly what a city should want on a planning commission. And um you have to wonder, so what was the problem? Was he too smart, too inquisitive, too prepared? Cause he was all those things, and anyone that witnessed any of the meetings would have seen that. Um, the question of why this was handled so poorly, we'll probably never know. But I'm asking you to make adjustments to the process so the council can publicly discuss and collaborate on a matter such as removing a crucial commissioner who represents our city, especially a planning commissioner, and especially now when there are two major development projects coming in front of the planning commission, actively, right at this moment. I hope that you look at this incident and truly examine how we can move forward. And please, let's not move backwards. We have made so much progress in the last several years. Community transparency, you know, your council transparency. Use this as a learning incident, and please bring this back to the council. Commissioners should not be removed for no reason, and there should be a discussion, a collaboration, and a majority vote to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Joanna Swara to be read by Denise Miller, followed by Frances Alet.
Hello, I'm Denise Miller, and I'm reading this for um for Joanne. And I'm happy she called me and asked me to do this for her, because I couldn't figure out what I was gonna say about this situation. So you saved me a lot of work. So um I am represent, I am requesting that the council review and revise the current procedure for removal of a commissioner. One council member having the power to unilaterally remove a commissioner without any oversight is just not right. Commission appointments are reviewed and approved at public hearings, hearings like we saw tonight before the city council. Removal should have the same transparency. Unfortunately, this is not how it works now. As a result, a good man, a very qualified and well-respected member of the community, was summarily dismissed without any prior notification of any dissatisfaction about the performance of his duties as a planning commissioner. It was totally humiliating and handled in extremely insensitive way with no warning at all. Reputations have been tarnished as a result. Our volunteers deserve better than that. I also urge you to require the commissioners be given re- reasonable notice of a council member's intent to rescind their appointment and the reasons why. This way, rather than be blindsided, perhaps a remedy could be found, thus averting the drastic move of firing a commissioner on the spot. So one of the problems is now we have this perception of a background dealings going on at city hall to manipulate the democratic process. If that is not what you want the public to think, then please discuss my concerns at your future council meetings. That would be a step toward restoring some confidence regarding how the city goes about conducting their people's business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Frances Alet, followed by Larissa Byrne.
Hi there, Frances Alet, longtime resident. Before being elected to the city council, I think all of you had volunteered your time to work towards the betterment of our community. Car commissions are filled, staffed, for lack of a better word, by residents who volunteer their time in order to keep the city that we all love a desirable place to live. Most of our commissions are underutilized by the city. The exception to that is the planning commission, which has a profound impact on the residents' quality of life. Residents rely on those commissioners to do their homework on proposed projects so they can make informed decisions and to have a clear understanding of our municipal code and the various guiding city plans. Once in a while, the city's lucky enough to get a unicorn, a highly qualified resident with a particularly appropriate professional expertise who volunteers on a commission. That was the case on the planning commission. Our city has geologic issues that run throughout our boundaries. So when a geological engineer volunteered their time to be on the planning commission, our city was tremendously fortunate and benefited greatly. This commissioner always conducted themselves professionally, was always prepared, and understood the most complex of issues. Commissioners can be removed with or without cause by their appointing council member. They serve at the pleasure of the kings, so to speak. Council members in turn did not remove their commissioners unless something was clearly and egregiously wrong. That seems to no longer be the case. I think all of you believe in government transparency. Some of you even campaigned on that issue. There is nothing less transparent than what's taken place. Claiming that a commissioner has been disrespectful and having viewed the meeting cited, I believe that's untrue. And then removing that commissioner in a very disrespectful way is an irony that's probably escaped those involved. The cavalier way in which this planning commissioner, who was doing their job, was removed could deter residents from volunteering in the future. This action indicates that we need guardrails on the removal process. I strongly urge the council to enact new rules that would require a vote of at least four commissioner, excuse me, four council members in order to remove a commissioner. Like any place of business, there should also be procedures in place if there is an actual problem. Barring illegal, unethical, or racist behavior, there should be warnings issued. I understand this will require more work on the part of the council, but these changes would prevent the use of uh of unfound reasoning to facilitate the capricious removal of highly qualified residents who volunteer their time. In the event there's a legal issue that cannot be discussed in public, a closed-door removal is understandable. However, that would be a rare occurrence, at when removals should not be standard operating procedure for the city. Having a more stringent removal process will ultimately benefit the city and its residents. Please consider this for a future agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Larissa Byrne, followed by Prissy or Pripsy. Don't have any second name there.
Hello, my name's Larissa Byrne, and I live in Calabasas for twenty-five years. And I just want to echo the voices of my fellow neighbors over here. Um, I think Michael Jacoby said it best when he reminded everybody that public officials, all of us have a fiduciary duty to act responsibly and in the interest of the entire public, the entire city. And I think in general, that's what you guys all try to do. Um fiduciary, I think, is Latin, and it means something about trust and confidence. And as a, just as an individual who has been participating and respectful and believes that the way we make our communities good is by getting involved. This has eroded any trust that I could have in my elected officials. I don't feel like uh the democracy that was forming, watching the meetings was enjoyable, because there didn't seem like there was anything, no collusion, no friendship, no, it seemed like people were vetting out projects, vetting, reading the material and, and bringing up good points. And this has really um made it difficult, because I love this city. And I, I don't wanna sit back and complain. I wanna be involved and volunteer and do what I can. But when I don't speak the way somebody wants me to speak to just be removed or for no reason that I could find, that would be awful, and I would feel used and I would feel hurt. And I really think people have stepped up in the last eight years. You've had more public participation, probably, especially from the west side than ever. This is gonna do a number on that, because people can't trust. And, and I really urge you guys to put something on an agenda that you will reevaluate, because it used to be that it took a majority vote to take somebody off a commission. Then somewhere it was changed, and probably for a good reason. But it really doesn't seem like a democratic process at all. And it's going to make everybody less likely to be involved, and I just wanted to say that much. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's, I have P R I B S I or P I, P R I S S I? I didn't know if that's Priscilla or did you forget to put anything? You're just trying to make me work a little here. Okay. Followed by James Bukowski, Bukowski, welcome.
Yes, I, I guess I turned in the wrong core card. So uh hello, Mayor Shapiro and city council members. I'm Priscilla Lee, and I live with my husband and daughter in Calabasas. Recently, I became aware of the fact that a planning commissioner, Greg Byrne, had been removed from the commission by the city council member who had appointed him. Although that follows the current rule that a city council member may rescind his appointment without involving any other city council members. I, I'm requesting that this rule be changed so that other council members would vote on the decision to remove anyone on any commission. I'm a member of the Calabasas Coalition, and we filed a public request. We know that Greg Byrne is a thoughtful, highly experienced geologist who would, who has unique skills, making him a very valuable member of the planning commission. I have known Greg for many years, and to say that Greg was rude as, as a council member accuses him of being something that I've observed, never observed is in his actions or his speech, whether on the planning commission or in social situations. I am requesting that the removal process for commissioners be changed. Council members should hold a majority vote on whether any commissioner should be removed. I strongly believe that the citizens of Calabasas would prefer transparency on the part of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. James Bukowski and followed by Mark Levinson. Welcome, Jim.
Evening. I'm James Bukowski from Agoura Hills. I'm here to report that I have completed my year of service for the Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. The civil grand jury is completely different from the more familiar criminal grand jury, which is drawn from the same jury pool as for criminal and civil trials. Every year, citizens, citizens submit applications to volunteer for the civil grand jury. After interviews by a judge and a lottery, twenty-three jurors and seventeen alternates are sworn in every July one. The civil grand jury does not hear cases or issue indictments. Its function is to investigate and report on the operations of the offices, departments, districts, and agencies throughout Los Angeles County. The civil grand jury serves as a watchdog to provide third-party objective checks on the workings of local government. The civil grand jury forms committees, each of which concentrates on certain areas. These committees visit facilities, interview officials and employees, and develop recommendations for improving government operations. The citizens complaint and detention committees are essential, because the civil grand jury's mandate includes hearing, examining citizens' complaints, and inspecting all jails, police, and sheriff stations and holding cells. We twenty-three volunteers knew that serving on the civil grand jury was a full-time commitment for one year. We came from different backgrounds from all parts of Los Angeles County. We devoted five days a week to our work, traveling every day to downtown Los Angeles. My commute was easier because I use the express commuter bus number four twenty-three that goes straight through Agoura Hills and Calabasas, and brought me downtown every day around seven thirty A M. Here, all jurors met, dated to have discussions, working committees, interviews, and research, and make supermajority decisions. We got to know everybody, each other, one another very well. We collaborated to publish our final report with seventeen investigations. The topics we investigated included the foster care system, the inmate reception center, the Metropolitan Transportation Authority, sheriff's operations, stormwater capture, housing for the homeless, collection operations, mental health evaluation teams, career technical education. I was a principal author of two topics, housing vouchers and county fire department, and a contributing author for three other topics, metro rail and juror compensation and education. Our final report was delivered to the judge of the Supreme Superior Court and to all subjects of our investigation. Agencies to which our findings and recommendations are directed must respond within ninety days. Copies of all past and present jury reports are on this county's website. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And for the, thank you for your service. And for those who don't know, uh Mr. Bukowski served our communities, one of the longest standing members of the J P A for uh then Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center. So thank you. Um, next, Mark Levinson, the last card I have.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And also Jolene Strick and Celine Capilla, Capilla.
I live in Los Angeles. I'm the immediate past chair of the Chamber of Commerce. And what Councilman Kraut already started, I want to anyway acknowledge the uh cooperation and the partnership between the Chamber of Commerce and the city in putting on the mayor's lunch, which is coming up the seventeenth. We already have more people registered to attend than we have in the past. No deadline to purchase tickets is Monday at five P M. So anyone that is interested, uh please call the chamber office. Uh and we'd love to have you uh honor the mayor at that time. Oh, this year, we've had some major sponsors, as well as our table sponsors, of which the city is one, so we thank you for that. Uh the other reason I'm speaking tonight is I'd like to introduce Jolene Strife, who is the new uh client uh director for um a center for natural healing here in Calabasas. The center started in two thousand and four. Unfortunately, uh the owner, uh developer, part of the school had to leave because of another commitment just now. But uh certainly Celine will be around and uh before, yeah, I'm sorry. I'll let Jolene speak about what they do and what they bring to the community and the offices here in Calabasas.
Hi, my name's Jolene Strive, and I'm a client director for Onslay. We're the best kept secret in Calabasas. Um, what we do is natural healing through holistic, a variety of different modalities. And with that, um if you've ever been to a doctor or, and they don't know what the, what your ailment is, come to Calabasas, come to Onslay, and we'll be able, through our bio resident scanning, we're able to determine what the ailments are and then able to help you with natural healing. So um Calabasas has been a great place for us. We've been around for a long time. And like I said, we're right off, right off of Parkway. Um, so we welcome everybody and let's get a lot of healing done. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I don't have any cards, but are there any members of the public online wishing to speak on any non-agendized item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have three hands up, Norma or Mark Citron. We'll see who, which one it is.
Okay. Sign in, please. Whoever, whichever Citron we have tonight or both.
Hello, that's Norma Citron. I'm a longtime resident of Calabasas. Mayor and city council members, the current municipal code number 2.27.020 addressing removal of a commissioner allows unilateral decision-making. Speaking generally and expressing only my opinion, it's my feeling that unfortunately unilateral actions may reflect bias or an agenda that's not transparent. Unilateral decision-making is definitely not transparent. I understand this code was created 15 years ago to deal with the situation present at that time. Tonight, I'd like to request that the entire council review that municipal code and put forth a policy and procedure for removing a commissioner. That means how they're notified, when they're notified, by whom they're notified. I've researched many cities municipal codes for removal and I've found very little unilateral removal statements. It's just not universal. Most say planning commissioner terminations are recommended to be affirmed by four members of the city council. In addition to the requirement of a four-member affirmation for removal, the city of Anderson, California, for example, further states, although each commissioner appointed will have been nominated by a council member, no commissioner shall be answerable to or directed by any individual council member. Members of the planning commission shall be subject only to the direction and control of the entire council as provided in and limited by ordinance and state law. The word frustration was used to describe the response of the community to the recent removal of a planning commission. Again, I can only speak for myself, but I would describe the feeling I have as bewilderment. The planning commission is quite unique as a quasi judicial committee or commission. It requires a level of expertise that a relatively few residents possess. We have a very small pool of planning commissioner candidates. It will be very difficult to find a replacement. I do hope the council will add this review of the municipal code to a future agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, who's next?
Joe Chilko.
Welcome, Joe.
Hi, I'm Joe Chilko, longtime resident. And as a resident, I'd like to know why our city no longer has an engineering geologist on its planning commission. It's a very specific set of skills that brings a level of understanding and expertise to our city's planning development. Volunteers with that level of skill and expertise are uncommon. A former planning commissioner with comparable skills is now on city council. That's how highly valued those skills are to Calabasas voters. The best interests of the residents are not served by this planning commissioner's removal. Calabasas residents deserve to know why this action was taken. The planning commission is one of our decision-making bodies. Its actions impact the residents' quality of life. The public should have the opportunity to participate in the removal process. Written documentation of any concerns addressed and direction on expectations from the appointing city council members should be required before any removal. All city council members were informed by email of this action taken by one council member. I've reviewed that email and viewed the meetings. The statements made are unsupported by facts and the characterizations made cast unfounded aspersions. The timing is concerning. It lacks transparency and creates mistrust of our local government. If there was a problem identified, then it should have been addressed in a progressive manner. Instead, this planning commissioner was summarily dismissed immediately. Commissioners deserve to be treated in a respectful manner. This is unacceptable. The dismissed planning commissioner always came prepared, having read all the documentation provided, to make thoughtful comments on point. If a commissioner can be removed for doing their job, acting in the best interests of residents by following policies the city has put in place, then there's something seriously wrong with the process and it needs to be fixed. This action will demoralize and deter any resident considering volunteering their time and expertise, not increase public participation. Nothing about this aligns with the ideals of democracy. Calabasas residents have lost something of great value and we deserve better. I ask that the city council put it on the agenda and make changes to the removal process. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, who's next?
Alexandros McRakis.
Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon, council members and mayor. My name is Alexandros McRakis and I am here representing Delta Plant Systems. We're a biotechnology lab located in Canoga Park. Our vendor number with LA County is 212-392. Our lab's work is centered around water conservation and eliminating irrigation and fertilizer runoff. We are currently working with the Parks and Recreation Departments of City of Glendale and Redwood City. In those cities combined, Delta Plan is installed in around 30,700 square feet of grass and several trees. With our technology, we were able to reduce irrigation by as much as 50% while maintaining the green mass and eliminate all associated irrigation and fertilizer runoffs in those locations. Delta Plan is a hydrogel soil additive that is diluted in water and topically sprayed. It is a one-time application and remains active in the soil for five years and does not need reapplication. We are also 100% non-toxic and biodegradable. There's a lot of science and information behind our work, so we would like to be connected with the appropriate contact for the city so that we may schedule a meeting with them along with the city's Parks and Recreation Team to see how we can collaborate together to keep the city's public spaces green while conserving water, which is essential in California's current climate. At Delta Plan, we choose to protect our environment with every step we take. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Together, we can make a positive impact on our planet for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any other members of the public?
No more, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, our city attorney would tell us we are not allowed to respond to public comment, which we are not. Anyone who wishes to may send information to our city clerk at the city website for future reference. And we've received a number of letters as well that are part of the record here tonight. I'll move on to consent items, items three through 10. Do my colleagues wish to push, do any of my colleagues wish to pull any consent items?
Um, I'd, I'd like to take off four, five, and 10, please. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Why don't we start with Councilmember Bazajin on item four?
Okay. Item four, I, this is for the city attorney. Are we doing the minimum required under this bill? In other words, are we being as flexible as possible?
Yes, we've created a procedural path for how to do the bill, but we are being, preserving maximum flexibility.
Okay, I had a question about that though. Many years ago, I'm not going to name names. We had a, a council member who had an extended illness who could not be in the chambers. What provision is there for that here?
That doesn't come under AB 2449. That comes under the pre-pandemic rules for participating remotely. And that council member could participate remotely if they were willing to disclose their remote location. If their medical situation was such that they would not be willing to disclose the remote location, then they would be subject to the time limits under AB 2449.
So this is, this works in conjunction with the pre-legislation. Correct. And that pre-legislation also requires that you be in the city limits, correct?
No, the, the remote participation can be outside the city limits. It requires at least a quorum be present in the city.
No, I mean, the prior pre-COVID rule, the prior rule, doesn't require that you be in the city limits?
No, it doesn't. It requires that a, that a quorum of the council be in the city limits, but not all five.
All right. Thank you. That's my question on that.
Thanks. Before we go on to item five, I'll ask if there are any members of the public or online wishing to speak on actually any of the consent items, if that's all right, so we can take care of that.
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bazajin, let's move on to number five.
Five, I had a question about recent legislation that was approved by the state legislature just a few weeks ago. How, um, does that not change the parameters of salaries? I'm assuming it doesn't affect this particular ordinance, but that would change in the future. Is that correct?
Yeah, once that legislation takes effect, it creates an opportunity to, to do a further increase. And we can bring back an ordinance that will affect that. Again, it won't take effect until the next election.
Okay, I'm not asking for an increase. I'm just wondering if, so this is going to be consistent with the new legislation as well, correct?
Yeah, this doesn't violate the new legislation. The new legislation creates a higher amount, which we can bring that back at a future date.
All right, that was my question on that one.
All right, number 10.
Number 10. Um, I had some concerns with it. It's more than just questions. I guess one question is, I know that there were cited some cities and jurisdictions that have this fee, but in the overall spectrum of things, what percentage of, of independent library systems do a non-resident fee? I mean, I don't think that's that common, is it? I see Barbara Lockwood.
Yes, it's very uncommon.
Okay, so a percentage, I, I, the only ones I found were the ones I cited in the report. I mean, I usually don't like, I mean, I, I don't mind being a little unique out here, but usually when I find throughout California, if there are only a few other cities that do it, it makes me a little uncomfortable to charge this fee all of a sudden. The other thing in, in the report that I'm a little concerned with is, I mean, the justification for a fee for non-residents is they're not paying into the system necessarily, so we're providing the extra service. But in this case, the report seems to indicate that the justification is we have a shortfall in revenue. Therefore, we're going to make it up by charging non-residents. And I'm not, I'm not sure I follow that quite to the tune of $100. I think that's quite, quite a bit to charge for a library card. And I'm wondering if, if we could go down a little bit to like $50. I mean, it just seems like that's an excessive amount and it would chase out or discourage non-residents from using a library.
Now, it's not all non-residents. It's just non-residents that don't live in a jurisdiction with non-reciprocal library.
Okay.
Services. And this was a recommendation from the Library Commission.
Was it unanimous?
Yes.
I'm kind of interested in what my colleagues think of this because I thought that was a little bit, to go from zero to 100 was a little bit high.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Please, Mayor Pretend Mindtrick.
I'm in support of it because it's only, as Barbara said, for residents who don't have reciprocal library privileges. So I think that we're providing a lot at our library and if I'm, I'm comfortable with it and especially with the unanimous recommendation from the Library Commission.
Councilmember Kraut.
Yeah, I too am comfortable with it. I think it would encourage other cities to consider reciprocal agreements more strongly. And as was mentioned by Councilmember Bazajin, I think my greatest concern is that people do have to pay into the library system. And so this will allow people that are paying into the system to have the resources and those that are not paying into the system would not have the resources unless they paid that $100 library card fee. It makes sense to me.
Okay. Councilmember Paulberg.
Barbara, I think we mentioned, I asked this question last time we were talking about this. How many, how much revenue do you think will be achieving with the $100? Doesn't seem like it would be a lot.
I don't think so. Um, there are probably about maybe a thousand of our patrons that, well, I don't know, maybe 900 to 1,000 of our patrons that live in a community without reciprocal library services. So.
It just seems that the perception is we're punishing people and I would be in favor of reduced amount.
And, and I'm in favor of this for the reasons stated by two of my colleagues, at least at this point, no problem with it at all. So that being said, anything further?
No, I just wanted to discuss it and I appreciate your comments and I will, I will go along with the recommendation. I, I was a little concerned when I first read it, but I'm, it's, it's been more or less persuasive to me. Could you let us know how it's going though?
Yeah, definitely.
Like if people don't sign up and they just drop out of the system, I'd be interested in knowing.
And we'll definitely have notification of this change.
Okay. When's it, when's it going to affect?
Well, do you want to talk about?
Do you want me to address that one, Barbara?
Sure.
So Barbara and I have talked about that and what our plan is, unless council directs otherwise, is we would allow residents or non-residents to have current libraries to extend that through this year. That would give us proper time to notice those individuals. And then upon the, the first of the year, January of the coming 2024, they would have the opportunity to renew their license with that fee in place.
Okay, thank you for the answers.
Mayor Pretend, Mindtrick.
Actually, actually it's a catagun. I'm good.
Okay, seeing no further comments, do I have a motion to approve consent items three through 10?
Still moved?
Second.
All, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye passes 5-0. I've had a request. We're going to take a brief nine-minute break now. We'll, we'll come back and reconvene at 8:20. All the meeting back to order and we'll move on to new business. Item number 11, this is a call for review of the planning commission's decision not to approve a request to modify the city's story poll requirements for proposed mixed-use project located at 4799 Commons Way. The planning commission voted not to approve the request of modifications at the public meeting held on July 6, 2023. Michael Klein to make a presentation to council.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Before I begin, I do want to mention that in the staff report, I, I discussed the, the type of augmented reality that's being proposed by the applicant. And since the, the staff report went out, they have made some modifications in terms of the, the actual format. It's still, the applicant is still proposing a digital slash virtual slash augmented reality format. It's just a little different than what was described at both the planning commission meeting and in the staff report. I'll let the applicant, who will come up after I'm done, go through what the, what that change looks like. So with that, I'll jump into the PowerPoint. Just to make sure we're all on the same page here. I want to go over the location of the project site, which is the Commons Shopping Center. Or actually, let me start the. There we go. All right. There's the PowerPoint presentation. Sorry about that. So just to start off, the project site is located at the Commons Shopping Center, which is just next to the Civic Center. So we're right here in the city hall. And it's on Calabasas Road between Civic Center Way and Park Granada. It's approximately 26 acres and it is fully developed with a commercial shopping center. The shopping center is roughly 210,000 square feet. It contains a grocery store, a pharmacy, a bookstore, a movie theater, a handful of restaurants and other neighborhoods serving retail uses. And it is mostly developed with a surface-level parking, parking lot. The project site or the Commons Shopping Center is also located within the commercial mixed-use zoning district. And it's within the city's affordable housing overlay zone, as well as the Calabasas Park Center master plan area. So again, this is just to give the council and anyone watching the context of what's being discussed tonight, which is a proposed project at the Commons Shopping Center. Now, just to be clear, what's being discussed tonight is actually the story polls or requests to modify the city's story poll procedures. Not the actual project, but think of the city attorney mentioned that earlier tonight, that this item is not about the actual proposed project. It's about the story poll procedures, which is a requirement within the process for a new project, new multifamily, mixed-use or commercial project within the city of Calabasas. But just to give everyone context, as they think about the story polls, I do want to give a brief summary of what the proposed project looks like for the Commons Shopping Center. On May 1st, the Commons at Calabasas LLC filed an application to improve a portion of the property. On this aerial imagery, you could see over here, which effectively is the west side of the property. They've highlighted some areas where they're proposing a proposed mixed-use project. On the east side of the project, nothing is changing, so that portion of the site would remain the same. The currently proposed- The currently proposed project that was submitted with the city back on May first includes the removal of an existing approximately thirty-three thousand square foot movie theater, which is uh tucked behind some retail that's along the west side of the existing shopping center, and replacing that movie theater with a mixed-use residential building with underground and combination of underground and above-ground parking. Across from that and in the general parking area, the current application also includes the construction of new mixed-use buildings within that parking area. That would include accommodate, that would include subterranean parking with uh retail on the first floor and then residential units above that. So again, the the purpose of this is just to give the council some context of what the project is, so that they could relate that as they think about their, the applicant's request for story poll modification. So the city has story poll procedures, which were adopted by the City Council and then amended several times since its original adoption. And the story poll procedures require that all new commercial, all new freestanding commercial multifamily projects submitted to the city are required to install story polls. And story polls, for those who are watching, are effectively polls that outline the silhouette or the the corners of buildings, and then outline the top of that building so that in the real world, someone could see a general approximation of what a proposed building would look like. So city story poll procedures are required for all new commercial and multifamily projects. However, when there's a situation where not all of these story polls can be installed and would not depict the the overall project uh mass of the project, then the Planning Commission can review a request by an applicant to modify the city's story poll, modify the requirements, and install less than a hundred percent of the story polls required for that project. This is all part of the application review process. So in order for an application to move forward in the process and begin a public hearing, story polls are required to be installed at least four weeks prior to the first public hearing. In this case, it would be with the Planning Commission. And the story poll procedures require those polls to be to remain until the entire public hearing process and any appeal period has concluded. Um, that could be an indefinite period of time. And so it just, that's again, something to keep in mind. Now, within the story poll procedures, the Planning Commission also has the authority to allow less than a hundred percent of the story polls or completely waive the requirements altogether. And uh therefore, a project could proceed forward through the process and begin a public hearing without having to install any story polls or some variation of less than a full story poll plan. Now, according to the story poll procedures, there are specific guidelines um which an applicant, an applicant can use to request modifications. These criterias include safety, such as the presence of power lines, public right-of-ways, pedestrian access, and other welfare concerns. Effectively, if the story polls would cause a safety concern, then the requirement to install story polls could be uh could be granted, or the the request to install less story polls or zero story polls could be granted by the commission. Stability, such as structure, height, materials, weather, anchoring, and topographic conditions are also an area that can be uh considered by the commission. Impacts of trees, habitat, archaeological, biological resources, or the need to alter uh land, to alter the land in order to place poles is another consideration. Site constraints, such as roadway realignment, utility easements, and fire access requirements is a consideration, and finally, potentially excessive costs or unreasonable financial impact of the designing, installing, and maintaining story polls for the subject project. So all of these are is are uh issues that can be considered by both the Director and the Planning Commission in their review as to whether or not a modification of the story poll requirements should be made for a proposed project. The applicant for the Caruso project submitted their justification for modifying the city's story poll requirements. And it included the following. Under the current conditions, there's an, there's, as I mentioned earlier, an existing shopping center, uh, one of the largest shopping centers in the city of Calabasas that does that is in active use. Um, obviously, it it is uh built with structures, as I mentioned earlier, and has extensive site improvements that make it practically difficult to install a hundred percent of the story polls. And of course, the site is in regular use as a shopping center, open to the public, and used on a daily basis. Within that justification submitted by the applicant, they identified safety constraints, stability concerns, roadway, and utility alignments, and then, of course, potentially excessive and unreasonable costs, not specifically to the developer, but actually citing a burden on existing tenants that would be impacted by the installation of story polls. I'm not going to go into each one of these in detail. Uh, the applicant is here to present that to the council. So on June fifteenth, the Planning Commission reviewed a request from the applicant to modify the city's requirements. And at that meeting, the applicant requested that the Planning Commission authorize them to use a digital slash virtual model to visualize a proposed project rather than the installation of physical story polls on the ground. At that meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed their request and uh opened public comment. They had discussion, and then they ultimately continued the item for further discussion and gave direction to the applicant and to staff. At that time, the the direction from the commission was that they generally liked the idea of using a digital slash virtual model. However, they wanted the applicant to return with more information about clarity on proposed signage and community, community notification, as well as uh more clarity as to the actual digital slash virtual model. And finally, the app, the commission did ask the applicant to study the ability to install some amount of story polls. At that meeting, it it appeared that there is a recognition that uh while there's, while it's impractical to install a hundred percent of the story polls on the subject site, having some story polls out there to represent the height is important, and so they asked the applicant to study that and find and determine whether or not they could use some other form, if it's not story polls, maybe utility polls, something like that. Some other alternate method that could at least indicate the height of buildings in the real world. The applicant resubmitted a proposal and went back to to, back to the Planning Commission on July sixth. The proposal uh included information about proposed signage on the property, as well as kiosks to help the public identify the project and access information regarding a digital slash uh virtual model. And at this meeting, the uh the applicant also proposed a hybrid approach. And this hybrid approach included the installation of four poles or four-story poles to represent the height of the buildings, and then use the digital slash virtual model to depict the mass of the proposed project. And at that meeting, and in both meetings, uh, there were public comments. And in general, the public comments were were favorable to this hybrid approach. On, at the July sixth meeting, a motion was made by the Planning Commission to approve the applicant's revised request. However, that motion was failed with three noes and two yeses. So because of that, no additional and no additional action was taken by the commission. Subsequent to that July sixth meeting, two members of the council called this item up for review, which is why it's in front of the council tonight for the council's consideration. And since then, the applicant has continued to evaluate their stor, their story poll proposal that's in front of the council tonight. Um, they were able to take a closer look at each of the, where each of the poles are proposed to be installed and more narrowly define where they can physically locate those poles. That was an issue that was raised at the, at the last Planning Commission meeting. And they have also added a fifth location of a kiosk that would be installed somewhere on the Civic Center property to allow people over at the Civic Center to also view some sort of digital uh rendering of the project as well. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, they have also continued to fine-tune their digital slash virtual uh proposal that they're submitting to the council today. So I just want to take a quick look at their site. This is a site plan of the existing site. It's not overlaid with the proposed project. But on this site plan, they're showing, the applicant is showing the location of where they're proposing different signage, kiosks, and also the proposed story polls. These blue dots represent the location of where they're proposing to install billboards, and they'll have an example of what those billboards will look like. The intent of those billboards is to provide notification to the public of the proposed project. And it will include renderings of the project as well, and these are at the two uh, the west and the east corners of the property. The green squares represent locations of kiosks that uh, a general location of kiosk where the applicant is proposing to install. Just a little walk-up kiosk so that any, anyone on site, if they're interested in looking at what the project will look like, they can use that kiosk and access information regarding the augmented reality and and digital renderings. Um, the applicant is also proposing that if anyone needs help with it, they will be available for technical assistance, and they will also have iPads or other devices on site to provide technical assistance to the public. These purple circles represent the approximate location of where they're proposing to install the actual story polls. And again, the intent of these is to represent the heights of Building B, which is located out in this proposed Building B, which is located out in the parking lot, and then the height of Building A, proposed Building A, which is located where the existing movie theater is. And then in this image, I just kind of wanted to show the the council uh with an aerial what all of that looks like. So this green, these green shapes represent the general area of construction that is proposed in the project plans. The general area of construction includes anything from surface-level improvements like walkways landscaping, as well as uh subterranean improvements like parking structures. And then the blue represents the mixed-use buildings that are proposed with the project. Uh, this would be Building A. Building B is identified over with this group. Um, these three structures are actually all connected by a single subterranean parking structure. And then the red dots represent the approximate location of the the story polls proposed by the the applicant team, again, with the intent of showing the height of these of these buildings. So with that, staff recommends that the council review the applicant's request to modify the story poll requirements and to allow for a hybrid approach, to install a limited number of story polls, and use an alternative virtual slash digital tool to visualize the proposed project. The applicant is here tonight to provide additional information to the council. And with that, I will turn it over to uh Chris Robertson from Caruso.
Just, just for the record, can we, you filled out a card to give to Madam Clerk? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. It's great to be here with you tonight. My name's Chris Robertson. For the record, I'm Vice President of Planning, Government, and Community Relations. I'd like to start by thanking staff for their report, presentation, and overall guidance over the last several months on this issue. We'd also like to thank the Planning Commission for the feedback that they've provided at the last two meetings, much of which, much, most of which is incorporated into the proposal that we're going to walk you through tonight. And finally, thank you to council for expressing an interest in reviewing this item. Okay, so I think as everybody knows, we're currently in the process of celebrating our twenty-fifth anniversary as part of this great community. We opened the Commons twenty-five years ago, just seven years after the city incorporated as a city. So the Commons at Calabasas and the City of Calabasas have really grown up together. We've taken this opportunity to really celebrate our partnership with the community that we're incredibly proud of. Um, and so on the slide, you can see a few community events we've held over the last seven months. Everything from the annual menorah lighting to the holiday stroll and the summer barbecue that we held just a couple of months ago, just as a way to celebrate our partnership again and give back to the community. So as we started to approach our twenty-fifth anniversary, we started to reflect on the steps that we need to take to ensure that the Commons remains vibrant for the next twenty-five years and beyond. And just as we always do at Caruso, and as we did twenty-six, twenty-seven years ago when we were building the Commons, we went to the community. That process really started a year and a half, two years ago. We started by having very high-level conversations with community leaders. We wanted to get a better understanding of what made Calabasas so unique and special to them. Uh, what role the Commons at Calabasas played in their life, what things we were doing great, what things we were doing even better. And as we look towards the future, what types of new uses made sense to start thinking about bringing in. We went, then went out to the community at large numerous times, inviting them to participate in a series of workshops and listening sessions. And we took all of that feedback um and acted, really treated that as my um guidepost to inform the plan that we ultimately filed with the city. Won't go into detail about all of that, because we'll be discussing that at a future meeting, I'm sure. Um, but just wanted to provide a little bit of context. Uh, so I think as stated in the staff report, we did file an application with the city in May. Um, we've since gone to the Development Review Committee, gotten feedback from staff about the additional information we need to provide in our application. We have provided additional uh information. We've gone to the Architectural Review Panel now twice, gotten a lot of great feedback from them, which we already incorporated into our plans or are in the process of incorporating into our plans. And the next step really is to go to the Planning Commission to present the project. But before we do that, we need to address the story poll procedures, which of course is a subject of tonight's meeting. So just to sort of anchor the discussion, which Mr. Klein did a little bit already. Um, this is our conceptual rendered site plan on the screen. You can see that we're proposing two areas of improvement at the Commons just east of Commons Way. We have an area in the surface parking lot that's proposed for new shops and restaurants orchestrated around a beautiful new open space plaza that's really meant to be an area for the community to enjoy and that we can program in different ways for community events. Um, and then a couple of the buildings have residential above. One of them is one-story, another um is just one-story of ground floor retail with residential above. And then across from that area, which will be sort of a new Main Street area, you have the location of the existing theater building, which essentially raises up. And then in its place, we're introducing a new residential building with beautiful new apartment homes and a little bit of retail on the ground floor. So this is an image of the Commons as it exists today, just taken off of Commons Way a little bit, looking out towards the improvement area. So you can see the theater in the background. Barnes and Noble is in the mid-ground there, and over to the right is the area proposed for improvement in the surface parking lot. This is a close-up of that area in the surface parking lot. So you can see, obviously, there's existing parking, landscape medians, a lot of mature trees. We have some fire apparatus, fire lanes, drive aisles, et cetera. And then this is the inverse perspective, so looking out across that open space area towards Polychex now. And again, just showing the existing parking, landscaping medians, and all the existing development that we need to navigate. So what would story polls mean for the Commons at Calabasas? Uh, this is a section just to illustrate kind of how we would have to install it, particularly for Building B. Um, essentially, we'd need to anchor the poles using using a series of dead men, which are nine-hundred-pound concrete anchors. Those would be affixed to the pole through the use of guy wires expanding out in three, at least three or four different opposite directions to maintain the pole upright. And then we would have to have multiple interviews of those guy wires, depending on the elevation required of the pole. Um, those dead men for Building A would mainly need to be located on the rooftop of the existing theater or on the rooftop of the adjacent tenant spaces, because the Building A was intentionally designed to step back from the existing tenant spaces, which we'll see in in another slide. Um, and then we'll go over that in a little bit more detail. So this is a, an illustrative plan view of what this might look like for Building A. Um, on the screen here, you see the poles are illustrated with the little green circle. The guy wires are the green dash lines extending out. The guy wires are the green dash lines extending outward, and then the dead men are the blue squares. And you can see the vast majority are located on the rooftop of what is the existing theater building, so the purple area. The thick black line, um, sort of at the face of building A, illustrates the footprint of the existing tenants. So everything from Marmalade Cafe all the way over to Jenny's Ice Cream. And you can see those dead men would need to be located on the rooftops of those spaces as well. Neither buildings are structurally designed to withstand that kind of load. Um, and then also to the south of building A, and then over to the east, you can see the dead man would also encroach into the existing fire lane, making it impossible for the fire to access down that road. It would encroach onto the city's property next door, both in existing parking spaces, as well as walkways. Um, and then impede access to the Marmalade Cafe outdoor patio. And then this is a perspective on building B. Obviously, no existing buildings in the parking area, but this would take up significant areas of existing parking, landscaping, drive aisles, including the main access way there along Commons Way, in addition to the fire lanes that we've discussed. So we have, obviously, at the Commons, over 200,000 square feet of shops and restaurants. We have the privilege of welcoming thousands of people to our center every day. Um, we would have to include a perimeter fence around these areas to make sure that people are staying away because there are serious safety concerns. Um, and it's not feasible, which we believe the commission agreed with. So as Mr. Klein already said, when, when reviewing the story pool feasibility, these are the factors that we look at: safety, stability, accuracy, impact, site constraints, and unreasonable financial impact. In this case, not to us, but to our tenants. Um, so we are in a city center, as I mentioned, welcoming thousands of guests to our center every day. We're also in a high-wind area. Um, even with the guy wires, I know this council has experience with story polls falling, um, and we cannot risk public safety when people are visiting our center. Um, and we are also mindful of creating an attractive nuisance where, you know, this may draw, uh, attention and interest to do interesting things with this, these polls. Um, it also does not provide an opportunity to depict an accurate depiction of the building because of the significant articulation our design incorporates, and as well as the, the, the alternating elevations for buildings on building B. We talked about the site constraints already. And then our, and our tenants would just be unduly impacted. So we wanted to come up with a creative alternative, um, to address this issue because we know it's important to the commission and the council. And the commission was very helpful in providing feedback. So we came up with, um, well, first we looked at the story poll purpose, which is really to illustrate the height and or massing of a building in relationship to the site context. So we came up with a three-pronged approach that includes high-quality, user-friendly augmented reality. We also agreed, per the commission's request, to install poles. I want to stress, these are not story poles. These are actual timber poles, um, combined with a composite material that will actually be anchored into the ground, um, designed essentially on a permanent basis. We will not install, or install story poles. Um, and then we've added a very robust notification process to make sure that everyone is aware of our plans and has an opportunity to participate and take a look at, uh, both the poles and the augmented reality. So essentially, we're proposing five kiosks, um, that will be located across the center. They'll include a link to our augmented reality videos. And this is really meant to ensure that people walking around the site that may not know about the project, um, have an opportunity to discover it organically, and then also from the convenience of one's own home. We're incorporating two physical poles for building A, uh, in the rear, as Mr. Klein showed, and then two physical poles for building B across from where the existing theater is. And then our notification package includes two four-foot by eight-foot billboards, um, on both of the property frontages in front of Citibank and King's Fish House. Um, we're also, you know, recommending, if the city is amenable, to including information about this package on the city's project website in addition to the notification materials that will go out, um, as part of the public hearing package. And then, of course, we'll have things on our website as well. So this is the concept plan that we sort of already walked through, so I won't spend much time on this. But the two billboards are depicted in the blue circles at the corner of the site. The green kiosks are in the little squares, and we have a symbol there showing the view shed. And then the poles here have shrunk significantly since we've had an opportunity to diligence the site a little bit more. Uh, we had to move the location of a couple of those poles because there are very, very dense utilities present in the existing site. So, um, the kids should give the council a better idea of where exactly those poles will be located. This is a rendered example of what the kiosk will look like. Um, so we've included a rendering, and I have a zoom in, so you don't have to try to read that. Uh, but it'll have a rendering of the project description. Essentially, you'll see it. Um, these are signs that we have on property currently advertising, you know, our partnerships with different philanthropic organizations we have going on right now, um, promotions with different tenants. So they're highly visible, something that the community is familiar with. It'll highlight that there is a plan proposed for the Commons, and then it'll have a QR code with, that you can scan. It'll take you to our website. This is just kind of a closer vision, version of that. This is all still in draft form, but it's essentially, we're trying to pack a lot of information into these kiosks at the commission's request. Uh, it'll also have contact information for one of our team members. So anyone who hasn't reached out to us directly or engaged with us directly has the opportunity to do so. Um, and then essentially, you'll scan the QR code on the kiosk. It'll take you to our website. This is a mock-up of the new webpage that we're proposing to add to our current project webpage. You can see the Experience, the Plan tab in the upper right circled in gold. And then you'll have the different kiosk locations there. You can hover over with your mouse, and the video will pop up showing the, the animation, the augmented reality. So this is, um, an example of what one of those images will look like. I just want to underscore that this is still a work in progress, but we're really, really excited about how this has turned out. So you can see, this is a, this is actually a photo of the Commons as, well, it's actually a film of the Commons as it exists today. And then we've inserted the building. So not only do you see the height and the massing, but you see a lot of the architectural details as well. So I'll see if I can play this. So that's an example of the augmented reality that we're looking at. Um, and again, we'll have five different videos spread across the center. And then in addition to that, we are proposing the physical poles, which we've talked about, circled on the screen, just so you can see them, since, because the dots are so tiny. And the top of the pole, we're proposing to be painted in a bright color, like orange, demonstrating the top of roof, and then in a bright color such as yellow or whatever the council would like to see, demonstrating the height of the architectural features. The intent is to install the poles. Again, we have to bury them in the ground, I think about six feet underground in order to stabilize them. But we would install the poles, and then we would go out, um, and film so that the community can see the physical poles, both in real life, in addition to the augmented reality. So they have a real point of reference. And then this is a mock-up of the billboard that we're proposing. Again, four-foot by eight-foot, um, with information about the project, rendering AR poles. And also, we would use it as an opportunity to advertise the upcoming public hearings. And this is just sort of a zoom in on that. So as the hearing body changes, we'll, we'll update the hearing body and time and all that stuff. And then again, we would, um, encourage the city to include information about this on its own website, in addition to the public hearing notice and whatever, any other notification, um, tools that you might have in hand, just to help promote and make sure that this, we're spreading the word. So going back to the purpose of the story polls, which is to demonstrate the height and massing of the proposed building in relation to the surroundings. We have an image here on the left, which shows sort of like your traditional story polls in a commercial development with the orange netting. And on the right-hand side, we have essentially what we're proposing with the physical story polls integrated into the augmented reality. And we think that it's clear that the image on the right really does a much better job of showing the height, massing, and putting it into context of the existing center. So in summary, um, the three-pronged approach not only meets and exceeds the intent of the story polls, we feel it goes above and beyond. Um, just as the image we looked at showed, it will, it will provide a greater sense of accuracy for building height and massing and placement. Um, and it just continues the transparency that we've been committed to from day one when we started our community outreach nearly two years ago, and something that I know is very important to the city. So I know that is a lot of information. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have. Um, and we're very excited to move forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, we will move on to council comments and questions at this time, uh, on, on the report. Uh, although there are certainly a number of public comment cards as well. So I'll turn to, uh, Councilmember Bizajin for comments or questions.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I'll turn to Councilmember Albrecht. All right, Councilmember Kraut.
I'd like to save my questions for after the public comment period.
Okay. And Mayor Brett Timm-Weintraub, same?
I just have one quick question, and then I'd like to hear from the public. Where is this new technology being used throughout, either Southern California or nationwide? Because I know it's become quite popular for projects like these.
So the, the technology we were originally looking at is being used all over the place. But what we've realized as we started diligencing it more is it's generally used on infill sites that are rectangular without dynamic site context and constraints. Um, after we had the first Planning Commission meeting, we went ahead and moved forward with the technology. And as we started looking at it and exploring it on-site, we realized that the size of the site, the fact that there's exist, a sea of existing surface parking lot, mature landscaping, grade differences, the model wasn't working for a site like ours, which is so unique. Um, so we had to, we had to pivot. Um, and we think that what we came up with is even better than the original model. The difference is, you know, it'll be set videos versus being able to walk around and see sort of wherever you want. Um, but this is a very new technology. It's incredibly resource-intensive. Um, we may be inventing, inventing this, uh, which, which we don't shy away from. But as you can see, it provides a very, very accurate representation of how the building will look like within the existing center, which is, you know, very different than, like, a still rendering, for example.
But the specific, like, this new technology, not this, like, company per se, is being used for, through, for other projects.
AR is being used all over the country, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we're gonna wait for questions. I'll, I'll just ask, uh, Michael Klein a couple, just to confirm. The city has on its website all major projects within the city, uh, showing to the public for anyone who wants to look at it. Is that correct, including this project?
Yes, we, we have a project webpage for each major project. And in this case, it includes Caruso's project, as well as a link to their, their website.
Okay, thank you. And you mentioned the, I think you, you mentioned the requirements, the story polls approximately four weeks, uh, after a hearing. What is the approximate time you would estimate the story polls, uh, in any form would need to be up if determined by this body, uh, at that site?
The requirement is that they're installed at least four weeks prior to the first public hearing. So effectively, what they have to do is they have to, they have to sort of schedule out and think if they're shooting for a meeting, the first hearing in, you know, September, October, then they'll have to, or November, whenever it is, they'll have to install the poles at least four weeks prior to that. Now, inevitably, there could be a delay in going to the public hearing, so it could take a little bit, oftentimes, story polls are installed even further out than four weeks. Um, and then from there, in this particular case, because the project requires a review by both the Planning Commission and the City Council, we would expect that any story polls that would be installed out there would be installed for a minimum of two months and probably a little bit longer than that.
Okay, thank you very much. I have comments and questions like my colleagues, but we're gonna go ahead, as I've heard, and hear from the public. And if you have not yet filled out a card, I have a number of public comment cards on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please pull out a card in the back of the room and give it to the city clerk before we are completed, please. All right, we'll start with public comments on this item for those present, and then we'll go to those online if they have hands up, starting with, uh, Priscilla Lee, followed by Greg Byrne.
Hello, I'm still Priscilla Lee, and I still live in Calabasas. And I still live with my husband and child, grown child. So, uh, I'm just, just wanted to say real briefly that, uh, I recommend that we have, that you only approve of four story polls for each building. And I know it's more difficult where the theater was, but in the parking lot here, we, I, you know, we, that's the only way we can determine the mass, which is something that was said at the last, uh, council meeting. The mass of the, of the building. You can't tell exactly, you can see how tall it is, maybe, with just two, but four is really what we need. And so I, I urge you not to say that they can get by without doing any story polls or less than 100% at, at any rate. So, um, I'm, I know you've mentioned a safety concern, but I'm really more concerned about the safety of people trying to evacuate when all these extra residents are living here. And, you know, the east side is trying to evacuate in case there was a fire or something like that. So just consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Byrne, followed by John Swara.
Councilmembers. The project or the request that, from the applicant, came to the Planning Commission in the form of modification of the story poll ordinance. It became very clear very quickly that it was not a modification. It was a complete elimination of the story polls entirely. And the applicant wants to substitute that with augmented reality. The commission was very clear in the first meeting and gave direction to the applicant that the AR by itself is not going to be acceptable, that some story polls would be needed, that four poles per building or building cluster were act, were asked for by the commission. Four full-height poles with bright representation, representation on the top for both of those buildings. The direction was very clear to the applicant. You can go back and look at the meetings. They came back with two poles for each building, satisfying only one aspect of the story poll requirement, satisfying only the height requirement, and not satisfying the massing requirement. That is not acceptable. They haven't even given us an example of what the augmented reality looks like, and they want you to buy off on this, uh, reduced story poll plan, uh, without knowing what the augmented reality looks like. This, uh, is a, also, this is a dangerous precedence that you would set for any future project coming to this city that requires story polls. People will look at this and say, this is a precedence for not having to do what the ordinance asks. In this day and age, in this city, we are losing local control because the state is bullying the city with awful laws and requirements about housing. They're removing any local control. This is one vestige of local control that this study, city still has. It should be enforced. The Planning Commission did a big give. Four poles per building is not a large ask. It's reasonable. It's doable. The poles should be installed. And I know how one of you is gonna vote on this, but the rest of you, everybody's watching. This is important. You're setting a precedence. And it's very important that you think about this, uh, the story polls and what this means to the city. In, inform the residents, do what's right for the city, or pander to billionaire developers. That's the vote here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, next is, uh, Joe, John Swara, followed by Joanne Swara, who is going to have Denise Miller speaking.
Whoops, I almost did. Sorry about that. My name is John Swara, and I live in Calabasas. In 2015, the Calabash, Calabasas Coalition got started because of story polls. There was a hotel that was being talked about at Canyon Oaks. I mean, at the, at the Rondal Oasis Hotel. And then there was, well, there was also the hotel at Canyon Oaks. Planning staff, when we were asked, planning staff, when they were going to be installing story polls, they objected. They had a lot of reasons why story polls couldn't be installed on the Canyon Oaks site, primarily terrain was one of the main ones. We then took the request to the City Council, and the City Council listened. And they put it on the agenda and decided to work with the Planning Commission to put together a, a story poll plan. And that happened in 2015, and that is still the basis of the current story poll plan that's based on that. And what we, what we look for as we're looking with, with the story polls is it's a very simple kind of thing, is that it's some poles that are sticking up in the air. And what it does is it shows the height of the buildings, and it shows the mass of the buildings. So people can be driving by, they don't need to go to kiosk, they don't need to make, stop their cars, they could just drive by on Calabasas Road, or wherever, and take a look and see what, what the project is going to look like. Story polls are very popular. They're simple and easy to see. When installed correctly, they are highly visible portraying the height of the building. Tonight, over eight years later, we're back here discussing story polls. The Caruso team is to be commended for modifying their original proposal, proposal to have two story polls per structure. But this is to suggest that the Caruso team to be really responsive, put four story polls up per structure to get that done, so that we can see what really is going to happen and not have to rely on virtual reality. The augmented reality being proposed by the Caruso team is a good addition to the story polls to represent the project, but it's important to have the story polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Miller reading for Joanne Swara, and followed by Frances Alet.
Hello. Um, Denise Miller, and I'm gonna read Joanne's thing, but I got some other ideas too. The city's story poll policy was revised in 2015 because people wanted to easily see the height and mass of what was being planned for their city before bulldozers arrive and shovels hit the ground. There was a call for transparency then, and there is a call for transparency now. The Planning Commission's decision to not approve the latest story poll plan for Commons Lane reflected that the two story polls would only show the height, not the mass of the project. The whole purpose of story polls is to show people passing by their cars or strolling on the sidewalk or across the street, just how the landscape will be altered. Rendering some billboards and augmented reality on smartphones can't realistically portray the immensity of what's being proposed. A minimum, a minimum of four polls per building are needed to fulfill the intent of the city's story, story poll policy. We deserve the full story now, not just some excerpts from a surprise ending down the road. And I have another minute. So this is a rendering with two poles. So you can't see, you can't see how mass it is, right? But if you had four poles, this is, I just came up with this. So if you have four poles, you can see the mass. That's what we need to see. We need to see the mass, not two poles just sitting in the air with no concept of the mass. So that was a freebie. Thank you.
Thank you. Frances Alet, followed by Anita McQuillan.
Frances Alet, still a long-term resident. Before our city's story poll policy, too often residents didn't know about a project until construction began. Most residents don't peruse the city's website or the Planning Department page to see what's new. I mentioned the concept of transparency in government earlier tonight in my other comments. Our city's story poll policy came about because residents wanted transparency in the development process. Story polls are crucial to that. Story polls are supposed to convey the mass of a project. Now, whether we call them story polls or physical polls, which I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, forgive me, but I, I'm not opposed to a physical pole. It doesn't have to be a story pole with guy wires. As long as we see the height, and there are four poles per building, that's the only thing that's going to show mass. Over the years, we've seen developers try to skirt the policy. There are situations where 100% of the polls aren't feasible. However, the city should always shoot for a bare minimum of four polls and opt what best conveys a project's mass. Now, the reality of an augmented reality rendering is that it does not illustrate massing as well as story polls, nor does it have the same outreach. Story polls or physical polls convey the mass of a project to everyone who passes by. It is passive communication. Story polls are not dependent upon residents being tech savvy. And no matter how simple you think the technology is to use, I guarantee you, there are going to be residents who will struggle with it. I applaud the developer offering to have tech people there to help residents who happen to be walking by, but augmented reality should only be a supplement to the story polls. As Greg Byrne noted earlier, your decision is going to set a precedent. So I ask that you do not, do not dilute the transparency of our story poll policy and our development process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita McQuillan, followed by Morin Nachem.
Did I have that right? Good evening. My name is Anita McQuillan, and I'm a longtime resident of Calabasas. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. During the planning meetings dated June 15th and July 6th, the Caruso team presented their proposed plans for a mixed project located at the Commons Way. This is where the movie theater is located. The agenda item read, consideration of modification to the city poll requirements. Modification? Modification means to make partial or minor changes. The Caruso presentation was not a modification to the city's story poll requirements. Rather, they presented an alternative system called an enhanced digital virtual tool. There were constant reminders to stay on topic, but I have to admit, I was flummoxed. What was the topic? Modification of story polls or enhanced digital reality? The city's ordinance requires story polls. Safety in installing and contained storing polls was raised by the applicant. It is my opinion that if the company, if the company does not have the engineering capacity to safely and securely, securely erect story polls, why should we trust them to build a structure as high as 85 feet? My conclusion is that the polls are needed to show the height of 85 feet, and the mass, and the depth of the structures. I feel very proud of our planning commissioners who clearly have worked very hard to understand the scope of this project. They have asked questions to protect the interests of the residents of Calabasas. I understand that there may be conflicting interests, but we residents of Calabasas have to live with consequences for at least 25 years. My thanks to our commissioners who participated in the meetings, particularly Michael Harrison, Bob Leah, and Greg Byrne, who questioned so that we residents could understand the scope of the proposed project. I thank them for their accurate and succinct use of language. I am very grateful to live in Calabasas, which is a unique and beautiful city. Responsible development will ensure it stays that way. I am totally opposed to the use of digital virtual tool as a replacement to the story poll requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Morin Nachem, followed by Navin Parmar.
Hello, City Council. My name is Morin Nachem, and I'm a Calabasas resident. I'm here to voice my support for Caruso's request to modify the city's story poll requirements for the project at the Commons. In the 25 years that the Commons project has existed in Calabasas has become a hub for our community. However, as far as malls go, it's an aging format that needs to be revamped. For comparison, I recommend looking at nearby shopping centers, the Pangar Village, Malibu Country Mall, and Palisades Village and other Caruso property. The thing that these projects have in common is that they accommodate more green space, create closed off pedestrian areas, and provide more boutique style shops. These are things that customers want, and that by extension, help the Commons and merchants stay profitable. I, I mention this because I view the stringent story poll requirements that Calabasas is enforcing on Caruso to be a no win situation at the moment. Either Caruso decides that the existing story poll requirements are too much, the company therefore stalls in its efforts to modernize, which over time will reduce traffic to the Commons and result in more empty shop fronts, or it decides to adopt the city's strict story poll requirements and thereby greatly disrupt access to the shopping center and convincing customers and businesses. Either option is anti-business. Realizing the situation they faced, Caruso did the responsible thing. They met with the city's Planning Commission early on in June to discuss alternatives to the story poll ordinance, including the use of augmented reality. They took the commission's feedback and came back to the Planning Commission in July with a creative solution that captured the essence of the story poll ordinance for which citizens voiced support, and that fit the requirements put forth during the June meeting. At the July meeting, a majority of the commissioners decided to reneg on the requirements put forth in the June meeting and rejected Caruso's proposal, which is why we find ourselves here at this meeting. Watching that July meeting felt like members of the Planning Commission were moving the goalposts with a direct aim to bury the project. There's an element of trust and understanding that needs to exist within a city and one of its greatest contributors to civic life, and that seemed to be missing that evening. Given our history with Caruso, the existing difficulties in adhering to the city's story poll ordinance as is, and the collaborative and creative manner in which Caruso approached providing an alternative plan, I recommend that the City Council approve Caruso's request to modify the city's story poll requirements for the project at the Commons. Thank you.
Thank you. Navin Parmar, followed by Julie Haje. Hi, Jay. Jay, thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Navin Parmar. I'm a Calabasas High School senior and a resident of our wonderful community. I'm here to give my support on the story poll alternative option being discussed tonight. I visit the Commons often to tutor other students or grab a bite to eat. From a student's perspective, I'm very concerned about the installation of tall poles on the property, as parking is often a challenge, and they may be a hazard for all the kids that frequent the shops. The Caruso team's alternative option of a QR code makes much more sense in today's digital world, and the interactive, non-intrusive approach would be appreciated by the public. I hope you will consider approving this idea instead, as there are a number of people here tonight who support the Commons. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julie, Julie J. Shay. Shay, thank you.
I'm, my name Julie Shay. I'm a longtime resident, 20 some years. There are neighbors here. Ms. Jay-Z, Ms. Miller. See, you meet your neighbors on the hump day. So, and then Mr. Pam, my lawyer friend. I'm in support of having hybrid modules for the, instead of the story, uh, story polls. And I believe the safety is a major concern. If my kids come over and they hang out at the Commons, all those polls will be major safety for the patrons at the Commons. If I come meet my neighbors here, they'll be all for two, because the polls look awful. But it's, it's just tough for the vendors to do business at the Commons, since we have certain reputation. Like, do me, my lawyer friend, my church friend, Barbara here, and Nathan, the Realtor. See, you meet so many people on the Wednesday at City Hall. So it'll be nice not to have so many polls at the existing building, structure. And I really support with the other people here for the hybrid module to finish the project. And that's it. Thank you so much. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you very much. You too. Do, are there, I have no other public comment speaker cards. Seeing that, I'll move on to any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter online. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two. Joe Chilko.
Okay, welcome, Joe. Welcome back.
Hi, I'm Joe Chilko, a longtime resident. This is a very difficult situation. A lot of the points that are being made on each side are very valid points. It is the city's policy. So it's the city's responsibility still to inform the residents. And I agree that you can look at the people who came and speak, spoke tonight, and those are the people that actually visit the city website and know what's going on to any great extent. So it excludes a lot of other people. I think Councilmembers Albrecht's comment about how successful the tech help program is at the senior center indicates that there's a certain portion of our population that could really use some help in that regard. I, I was glad to hear Chris from Caruso admit that, yeah, okay, this is, you know, real story polls are a much better representation. There's no doubt. And, and that's true. The thing is, is that when story polls go up, social media lights up. Immediately, people go, why? What, what's going on? The fact that the Commons is such an important part of our city, and, and right at the center of it, and it is a meeting place, and it's everything else that all the people in support said it is, that's why it's so important to make sure that people are actually informed about what's going on here. Now, when you talk about buildings of certain heights, you know what the standard height restriction is in Calabasas. And we know that because of density bonuses due to the affordable housing aspect of this project, allow them to go higher. But there isn't anybody that isn't going to look at something that is better than two times higher than that limit and not go, oh, that's an incredibly big building. And they shouldn't have that reaction when it's already built. So, you know, either way you look at it, augmented reality, I was so glad that they brought something tonight, because when I've sat through the meetings with the Planning Commission, that was my problem. What are you asking us to accept? What are you asking us to agree to? And they did show us something tonight, but they showed it from the best possible angle. I'd love to see those other videos. If, if people can access this from home, that's somewhat of an improvement. But it's like everything else. You have to know to go looking for it in order to have this happen. So it, it's, it's gotta be more than just a regular noticing that the city does. You know, this is a hugely important project to the city. And the point made about the fact that there's only going to be infill projects going forward. There are very few areas left that have undeveloped properties.
Joe.
You're always gonna have this problem.
Joe, your time's up. Sorry. Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk.
Amanda Weiss.
Welcome, Amanda.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. I'm Amanda Weiss. I have been a resident of Calabasas for nearly 30 years. First, I just want to say a quick thank you for acknowledging Peter. He was a really wonderful man. I believe this group is well aware that the Commons is a wonderful centerpiece for our community. I hope the City Council is willing to work with Caruso to make reasonable accommodations that will allow these improvements to be delivered in a timely, safe, and efficient manner. Caruso's plan proposes total transparency, and in fact, will allow residents to see beyond just a few polls. The technology allows true height and mass to be shown in the context of the existing Commons. It's far more accurate, I believe, than just a few polls that I think are going to be very disruptive to the community. Please agree to the revised story poll proposal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, we have one more, I believe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a person named Randy. Randy, when you come on, please state your last name. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Shapiro.
Good evening, Mayor Shapiro and City Council members. My name is Randy Fytherch. I'm a resident in Calabasas for thirty-one years, since nineteen ninety-two. I will be brief. From what I understand, augmented reality was the technology used at the Annenberg Wildlife Crossing Bridge to give all of us in the public a rendering of what to expect. I'm hopeful that the digital virtual imagery that is being proposed and hybrid poll approach will tell the story the same way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, no one else online, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. We have another speaker in person who would like to speak. The gentleman in the front.
Okay, if you could please give the card to the clerk, please, and then we can hear from you. Thanks so much. And if there's anyone else wishing to speak on this item, I'll ask you now to please fill out your card in the back and give it to the city clerk so we can continue the hearing.
Please state your name.
Sorry, I had tons of answers from Asian Orange, but everywhere I go, I see the sheriff.
I'm sorry, your name, sir?
John Patrick Biedis. I live in Malibu today.
Okay.
And I travel all around California, Beverly, and I see tremendous amount of homeless everywhere. And to me, anywhere you go, nice housing in the bubble. We live in a bubble in the five cities, Malibu, Calabasas, or Hidden Hills. And I have to have another agency to have the sheriff and the fire department do their job. So to me, the problem is not story polls or anything. Except the development is fine and it's not to hurt everybody and it's not to overburden the community with too much traffic. I think this is ridiculous myself. That's just my opinion. But you go downtown, you go Venice, you go Hollywood, you go LA. It's not like living in paradise out here and you see homeless. It's ugly and we have to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And Madam Clerk, any other speakers online?
No, Mr. Mayor, no more.
Okay, and I have no other public comment cards, so I will turn to council questions and comments now, and I'll start with Councilmember Bizajin.
Okay, I have, I have some questions, Michael Klein. Based on what was said, so looking at, at the various renderings, going by a strict interpretation of the story poll ordinance, what would be, how many story polls would be required at a minimum?
The story poll procedures, not ordinance, it, the procedures require that the project install a hundred percent of the story polls to depict the entire mass, height, location, et cetera, of all buildings. Within the procedures, though, there, there's a caveat, not a caveat, there's a, there's a section which is identified as planning commission review and story poll feasibility determination. It allows both the director and the planning commission to review specific circumstances applicable to a project, it's the site constraints, et cetera, to, for the planning commission to authorize less than a hundred percent of the story polls. And it, it specifies that after considering the, the issues that were brought up earlier in terms of story poll feasibility determination, which is safety, stability, accuracy, et cetera, the planning commission shall, shall consider the community development director's findings and recommendation and other such evidence as it deems necessary and proper, and shall make a determination whether to A, accept the director's findings and recommendations, or B, require more story polls than recommended, or C, waive the requirements of story polls altogether. So the story poll procedures do allow for the planning commission to completely waive all story poll requirements on a case by case basis when the specific circumstances present themselves.
Okay, so I, I understood that to be the case, but what my question was is in your professional assessment and the staff's professional assessment, if this were, just say this were an empty piece of land, how many story polls would you recommend on this typically?
If this were an empty piece of land, we would recommend a hundred percent of the story polls because
Which is how many?
They gave, they gave, they gave a story poll diagram. So we're looking at probably thirty-five to forty story polls.
The dots on these charts, I'm assuming as has been explained, is the area that would be blocked off or affected by the installation of the story polls and other things holding it in place?
I want to make sure I know what chart you're looking at.
Well, it's, it's the purple dots here, it's red dots here, it's different, different charts.
So on, on what was just held up by Mayor Proten, the purple dots represent the approximate location of where they can install the four story polls. They haven't given us a definitive idea of what
Within that area, there's going to be one story poll.
Within that area would be one story poll.
Okay.
What they're proposing, though, is actual buried utility poles. So the reason why they have that approximation is because they have to confirm where underground utilities, water lines, electrical lines, sewer lines, et cetera, are before they can nail down the specific location of, of a pole.
Okay, so you know, my, my general feeling in the, in the, my comment here is, you know, the, there's a presumption that would follow the ordinance, but we do have flexibility. I mean, I look at things on a case by case basis and I'm not considering the underlying project. But it seems to me that we have a fairly unique situation with respect to one of these areas, which is it's a pre-existing building. And I'm not sure how much more you're going to get out of additional story polls to show the massing of the, of the structure that's already there. Obviously, it's going to be a bigger structure, but there is a structure already there. It's not an empty lot or anything. I'm a little more concerned with the, the empty part of it, the, the, I guess they're not numbered here, but the part that has the four different blue buildings on it in the middle of the parking lot. And can you comment on that? Did staff look at those two separately?
Well, we looked at the, the story poll proposal as one whole project, but we did evaluate both, both components, building A, building B, building B is what you just referenced.
But do you find, do you find there to be a greater necessity for story polls at the part of the parking lot that has no improvements on it?
Our concern, staff's concern with that location is the impact that it would have to the parking area, the drive, and the drive aisle and the fire lanes on, that represent both going into the shopping center and then effectively in front of the movie theater.
I see. Well, no, I meant, I, not, I want you to isolate that one area, the one in the middle of the Commons, which is now just a parking lot.
Correct.
So what was the concern there that you had?
With traditional story polls, the concern is the impact that it would have to the drive aisles, including the fire lanes. And traditional story polls would shut down a major portion of that parking area. Now, with regards to what the applicant is currently proposing, which is not a traditional story poll, it's the buried utility poll, the main concern still represents, again, underground utilities and how many and where they can locate a utility poll.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Albert.
Thank you for that, Michael. I have a lot of thoughts on this and I prepared them because I don't want to miss anything. I don't want to just think it off the top of my head. First, I'd like to applaud the Caruso team. Their effort in reaching out to the community. Introducing this project has been thorough, first class, and unprecedented. They've been loyal, loyal partners to our city, greatly contributing to developing the widely recognized brand our city now enjoys. Sophisticated, upscale suburbia. We've certainly been a great fit together. It's also comforting and exciting to know that the Caruso organization is willing to reinvest in our city for the next twenty-five plus years in a new updated format, or as they refer to as re-envisioned. Now, as a member of this community for nearly thirty years, I remember very well when there weren't any story polls. They weren't required when we first moved here. Then became very familiar once they were a required building requirement. I have no arguments against story polls. I support their use and I think they serve a very useful need. They depict height, bulk, and massing for all projects. Story polls are also a convenient way to provide public viewing to weigh in should they find a project objectionable. Typically, story polls are also no great safety concern. I've always found when I've seen them sites or lots, generally speaking, or not within close proximity to other property, nearby pedestrians, or vehicle concerns. Consequently, a story poll site is generally safe from exposing any great public safety risk. However, erecting story polls in the heart of a very busy shopping center where thousands of people are traveling every day is a completely different matter. A matter that brings a real potential of risk to the safety and well-being for anyone at any time circulating throughout the Commons. So what if something goes wrong? There's no assurance that installing and maintaining these structures are risk-free. My shortened list of story poll safety risks that can't be waived off include failure during construction, red flag days ahead where sustained winds generally last two to four days and may cause them to dislodge or snap. Earthquake possibilities causing story polls to dislodge from its anchor or snap as well. Emergency and fire egress, confusion and congestions that it can cause. Given the constant pattern of pedestrian and vehicle traffic circulating about, I can't help but feel any accident caused by story poll failure would be certainly, would certainly cause irreparable harm and leave a very terrible forever stain on this center and our city. Who is willing to bear the responsibility should an accident take place? Why should such a dangerous undertaking take place? And why gamble with safety of the public knowing it could be and should be avoided? Now, responsibility to provide safe travel for everyone who enters that property. Certainly, the safety of the public should always be our top priority. And I feel it would be reckless and irresponsible to consider story polls at this location otherwise. So, in this case, I do support augmented reality as a substitute for story polls. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowe.
Thanks. I would like to start off with some questions, and I have a, I have a bunch here. So I'd like to start with the planning commission meetings, and I don't want to rehash those, but I do want to note, it was in our staff report to review those, so I did. And in the last minute and a half of June twentieth, the comments by Chair Harrison, Commissioner Mueller, and our community director, Michael Klein, was to move forward with augmented reality, but show some, what polls we can get, and in the words of Michael Klein, four to six polls per building. And in the words of John Mueller, if not, for good engineering reasons, come back and explain that to us. Those are the words in the minute and a half at the end. The minutes of that meeting says that the applicant should come back with more information on augmented reality, more information on billboards and kiosks, explore at least partial representation using story polls or some other design, and if not, provide detailed justification. The staff report, which summarized the next meeting before we got started, said that it was the primary tool to visualize the augmented reality was a primary tool to visualize it, that they were supposed to come back with clarity on signage and some story polls. I guess my question for our city attorney is, when three things that summarize the same event are that different, which one governs?
So the short answer is none of the above because the council gets to decide this matter de novo.
Appreciate that. Sorry, I'll move on. So in our story poll guidelines, it does say that the community development director makes the determination of these things. It says, the community development director shall evaluate the following factors in its determination and goes on to talk about safety, stability, impacts to the trees, site constraints such as roadway realignments and utilities, all of these great things that we have. I'm wondering if you could share with us, what did you review? Aside from common sense, what did you review that, that showed these conflicts? I mean, is there, is there a plan of the utilities that shows why more poles can't be put in? Is there, uh, I mean, I, I just don't see the material in the staff report to, to get to this conclusion, and I'm wondering what it was that, that brought us to this conclusion.
The, the initial review was of the entire story poll plan that was actually presented by the applicant tonight, which showed the roughly thirty-five to forty polls, the impact that the installation of those types of poles will have on the shopping center. From that, the recommendation from staff and myself is that it is not feasible to install a hundred percent of the poles onsite and directed the applicant to come up with some sort of alternative solution. They're based on our conversations and looking at different options. Ultimately, after the first planning commission meeting, the applicant came back with the idea of burying utility poles. The purpose of doing that, and we looked at different cross sections, both from a utility pole and also from a traditional story pole, there are certain trade-offs of going one direction or the other. A story poll can be installed wherever you want, but it has a much greater impact in terms of having to install guide wires because they're not properly supported. I mean, that, that is the support is installing guide wires three or four different, out three or four different directions. So traditional story polls, while have flexibility of being installed anywhere on the surface, would have a much greater disruption to the shopping center accessing publicly accessible areas, having to install these, the nine hundred pound weights on top of existing buildings, et cetera. So looking at the other cross section for timber, which effectively is a utility pole, that's being stabilized by being buried in the ground. But with that, the concern there is you don't have as much flexibility. You can't just place it anywhere because now you're concerned about what's below grade. There are a lot of utilities. There's a utility plan that was submitted by the applicant that shows utilities throughout the shopping center, and it is crisscrossed by water lines, electrical lines, gas lines, sewer, storm drains, et cetera. So it reduces that flexibility. From there, we, I looked at that and concurred that only a limited number of poles could be installed to properly depict effectively the height of buildings. It would, unless, unless the council wants to have them shut down the whole parking lot area, it would be very difficult to install four poles per building on building B and keep that parking lot area open. And you would be very, you wouldn't be able to get specific corners because of the underground utilities. So that, again, the, the buried, the buried utility poles represents its own challenges.
Okay, appreciate that. And we covered a lot of that material in the presentation already. I want to go back to the, you mentioned that there was a utility plan that you reviewed that showed conflicts here? Was that not included in the staff report? Why was that not included as an exhibit?
There's a survey and, and grading plans that were included in the actual packet. I did not want to include anything from the submittal project in front of the council tonight. We're just sticking with the discussion of story polls.
Okay, again, and I'm looking for justification for not installing story polls. That's why I'm asking about it. In our story poll guidelines, it does also mention that the community development director in consultation with a licensed story poll contractor, engineer, architect, or other similarly licensed professional. Was there, did the applicant bring somebody or did you call somebody separately or, or? Who was it that, because, and don't get me wrong, I mean, first of all, I don't want to disrupt the parking of the Commons at all. I, I think this is a beautiful project and I'm really looking forward to seeing it move forward. Obviously, we'll have to deal with that at a later date. Today, we're talking about story polls. But I'm trying to get my head around how do we, as a city, manage developers, not Caruso, but all of them collectively, who are motivated to show up here and say, it's difficult, it's windy, the guy wires are in the way. We've seen this before with the Rasmick project. We've seen this before with the Chabad. We've seen this before with the West Village. There's always the request, but there's no material to back it up. And I'm really surprised that we're at the third meeting here and we still don't have a story poll contractor to speak and say, it's not possible, or here's the challenges. So did you have anybody in these meetings to, to weigh in professionally there?
We have learned that story poll contractors are few and far between and very difficult to find at the present moment. There are, there are other projects that are pending that they're trying to find someone to install story polls, a traditional story poll contractor, and they're having a very difficult time. So in the case of the Caruso team, they're not going that traditional route. They're using their own construction and engineering firm. So we talked with them, but I also consult our own building and safety department as well as our M6 engineering firm to go over the site specifics and if they have specific concerns as well. So we use our own in-house engineering team to evaluate what's been submitted and consider whether or not there's legitimacy to their request.
Okay. You said that there was an engineer from Caruso present for this? What was it that he shared with you?
I did not have a meeting with an engineer. We used the documents that were submitted by Caruso's engineers.
Okay. And our story poll procedure has a requirement for the contact info and license of the installing contractor engineer in the submittal? So you have that?
I have not approved any story poll plan. So if we approve a story poll plan as required by our story poll procedures, it would include all of that information. But tonight, the request is a different type of request.
Gotcha. And so we have a plan in front of us that shows two polls per building? Is it possible to do two polls per building? There, in your opinion?
Are you asking me if it's possible for them to install what they proposed?
Yes. It is possible. Okay. So if two polls per building is possible, what information do you have to say that four polls per building is not possible?
Four polls per building is theoretically possible with the challenges that I mentioned earlier. That is ultimately up to the council to decide. If they want to go down the traditional route and have more polls installed, it may not look like the proposed type of polls that they're installing, which are the buried polls, has less of an impact on the surrounding area. They may have to go back to more traditional story polls, which would require a much larger area of the existing shopping center to be closed down.
Okay. And, and last question, and this is regarding the slides that we have. There was a graphic from the planning commission meeting that shows the dots where the story polls would be. And then there was this plan that we got in our packet that shows where the story polls would be. And they're not quite the same locations, these circles, so they've moved. Is that correct or?
That plan that you're holding up is something that I just tried to alter for visual representations to the council. But it does not reflect what they're actually proposing. It was just to provide another visual tool.
And then for a brief second, there was a plan up on the screen in the applicant's presentation that showed smaller dots where the polls would be going. Can we get that up on the screen again?
Yeah, as I had mentioned, from the July 6 meeting with the planning commission till now, they've continued to refine what their options are. And so this represents more in better detail what they're capable of installing. So in this, it looks like they have been able, sorry.
There, okay.
There we go.
So that one dot at the bottom middle looks like it's back in the driveway up against the retaining wall, not at the building.
Correct. Now, again, these poles, because they're, they're buried in the ground, they do not require any guide wires. So they have less of an impact around them than a traditional story poll does.
Okay. And have you looked at the information that shows that that hole can't be up against the building?
I haven't studied that specifically. They have submitted, they have submitted information to our building and safety department that's currently under review.
Okay. All right. Well, I think that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Tim Linech.
Thank you. I was actually on the planning commission when the city developed the story poll policy and I've been trying to like reflect back on that. And as far as my memory serves on this, when we studied, when we were coming up with the importance of story polls, I don't think anyone really ever considered how it would impact existing buildings or occupied homes. And that was an error on the planning commission at the time and whomever else was involved, because it really never envisioned looking forward to a project like this. Or someone mentioned the Chabad, like an occupied house and how that would impact things. So that brings us to the current situation where we are today, trying, everyone in this room is in agreement that we want to see what this project will look like and we want the public who isn't on the city's website, doesn't come to our council meetings to see the impacts or what the future of this project would look like. So now we have to figure out the best way to move forward and normally I support story polls, but in this instance, I do not feel that our current story poll policy can be effectively implemented on this site for safety reasons and also the impact of the, the current tenants, the current patrons. To me, it's just not safe. And I just am envisioning all the things that could go wrong with these huge polls. I see what the Commons looks like on Friday and Saturday with like kids running wild and what the invitation that these story polls would bring. I also think for the applicant, it would have been much easier for them to just do traditional story polls had they been able to. Coming back and coming up with all of these new policy or this new technology is, it's a significant investment from any applicant. I don't think anyone's trying to like shy away or not be transparent. I think there's a lot of constraints on this project. I mean, it's fully occupied, so many visitors, so many employees. I just, in my opinion, it just would not be safe. I do not want to see a large portion of the parking lot closed because I think that's going to have a greater impact to our community by losing so much parking. And I wanted to ask Michael, if they added poles or went like a traditional route, how much part, how much of the parking area, how many spots would we lose?
A minimum of about a hundred and forty parking spaces.
Right. So a hundred and forty parking spots for our busiest shopping center to me is just not doable. I really believe that everyone wants to see what this project will look like and we just have to find a creative way to make it happen. If this was a vacant land, vacant piece of property and an applicant came forward, everyone up here, everyone in the audience would be traditional story polls all day long. But we can't take away that amount of parking. It's just, it's not safe. It's not fair to the tenants. I mean, these people are trying to operate businesses. They have leases and then for us to take away the parking. So I don't want to get into all the technical thing questions. Those have been raised. I was really like fixated on the safety going through the, where is it? Like the safety with the power lines, blocking the public right of way, the pedestrian access. I know there are some concerns that the massing might not be shown, but I really think that if we can get comfortable with this technology, that if people are going to get out what we intended with the original story poll policy, it's just, we're deviating because of the constraints of this site. So I, I just, we can't take away all that parking and we can't risk something happening on that site to a visitor or a resident. I think that if, if there's any issues, people not being able to access it, there's contact information. I don't know if it's possible to, I think you put up Blake's contact. Maybe as a city, we can say like, in addition, if you, we just have to have ways for people that can't access it to be able to access it. I don't know, going one step forward than like Blake's email and phone number. I leave that to staff and the applicant, but I think that people are going to see what this project is. We're going to promote, we're going to publicize this as we continue to go through the process. So everyone can take a part of the public review. This is not an approval of any project. It's just getting the first step in the story poll plan and signage plan. I, I'm in support of these modifications for the reasons, but especially because I just can't imagine cutting off that much parking to an existing shopping center and the safety implications. So I just want to make sure that for anyone in the community who can't, is having technical difficulties, that we find a way to troubleshoot so that everyone has the ability to see. And yeah, those are my comments.
Thank you very much. And thanks, thanks to everybody for speaking here tonight in person, online and for all the letters. We certainly got quite a few on all sides of this discussion, just like we have a number of public comments tonight and everybody's comments are well received and appreciated. Just to clarify, and it's been clarified, but again, this is in 2015, 16, and again, 21, these are story poll procedures. There's not a story poll ordinance in our city at this time. It's a story poll procedure and guidelines and a number of items which are determined by staff and then the planning commission. In this case, it's come to city council. This is a difficult one in a lot of, lot of ways because we're balancing on one hand, what's important and the requirement, the story poll procedures are for public information and the right to know what's going on and what's going to be potential future in the city in a certain area. And the balance of that has also been discussed up here tonight is versus site constraints, safety being of the utmost importance always to me, and I believe everyone on this council. And in this case, the only unique thing from a number of issues we've discussed in the past in open space areas or open areas that did not have buildings is the potential financial impact and the business additional community impact to the businesses as well and residents. That's not something we can just ignore, I believe, as a council. I think we absolutely have to look at that as well. I, I was going to ask directly to the Caruso representatives, the question, it's already been asked. I, I know Michael's covered it. Why not the four polls, at least in one of the projects? Or even you could ask, why not three in the parking area? And I think very clearly the response was from Michael Klein was the fact that it would take away again, more of the parking lot. It would take, impact potential fire lanes and the underground potential utilities. I want to make sure I'm correct on that rather than asking for a response from the applicant.
Yeah, that's a correct summary. The traditional story polls would have a much greater impact. The utility pole style is limited in how, how and where they can install them because of underground utilities.
Right. And the, the utility pole is what we're discussing here tonight. So that was my question or inquiry, but it's the same answer, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I'm not in favor of waving. I know those are the, the options to have full story polls, waving or something in between. And I think something in between is the right solution at the end of the day. I, I do, I've heard all the discussion and issues about closing the parking area. Again, safety as per our guidelines, safety and attractive nuisance was brought up. That's something I'm very aware of for many, many years. And, and whether it's a story poll in a traditional sense or any other situation, attractive nuisance is a big issue, especially when we have a large youth population that enjoys our Commons as well. So that is a concern to me. I'd like to see, I'd like us to see the fine-tuned digital process because that would benefit. I know we got slides. I know we saw pictures today. But the digital aspect, what you're talking of, talking about, I'd love to know when that will be done and it will be available. If we go forward, if this council proceeds, I would suggest or hope we could request or demand or mandate, whatever the appropriate term would be, that staffing at the kiosks would be at a regularly or scheduled time for the public. And even someone here at Civic Center or Senior Center, whatever it might be, probably Civic Center on a regular basis, because I'm not going to say I'm the most technic, technological, not bad, toy boat, technologically challenged or expert at anything. But I think it would help to have a set time, a set person present to help the public at our Civic Center. If there are a lot of public members who have questions or want to see what, what is being proposed beyond the polls that we're talking about here. I understand the danger with putting, the potential danger with putting the story polls up on the rooftops and the issues on fire lanes, walkways, fencing, which would affect businesses and create a safety hazard potentially for our city. So those are, those are my comments. Again, I am, I, I think this is one where there's no perfect solution. It's been mentioned. And, and that is important that in my mind, Caruso has been a tremendous partner of the Commons to our city for 25 years, nothing to do with anything except being a place. I remember sitting in, in hearings back at the old city hall and present and James was on council when this was being brought forward to even have a Commons. And there were plenty of people speaking to not even have a Commons here. I don't think, I think a mass majority of our city would turn it around now and say, it's one of the best things going for our city. It, it's a tremendous fantastic partnership we do have. But again, this is not a perfect solution, but it is a viable solution. The, the virtual reality options are not the best option, but for this particular site, I believe the combination as presented is the best option. And those are my comments. Council members, I believe, Councilmember Bizajin, do you have more to add?
No.
Nope. Anyone else? Councilmember Crowe?
Yeah, just point of order, the public hearing is still open. Did you want to close that before we deliberate? No?
If we are discussing now, I I am looking to see if, I, I don't believe there's any more. I've asked the city clerk. There's no one on, online who wishes to speak, correct?
No, Mr. Mather.
Okay. And I don't see that this is, and you're saying it's a public hearing, but it's a, it's a staff item.
Oh, no, technically it's not a notice public hearing. The notice public hearing is for the, the project approvals themselves. Story polls doesn't have a notice public hearing, but certainly we, we took robust public comment.
Right. Okay. Thank you though.
Then just, you know, the comments I'd close with would be this. We see in front of us, it's possible to do two polls per building. I haven't seen anything that shows we can't do four to six polls per building. The plan in front of us shows at least one of those polls on a rooftop. But the second poll is way off of the building. I, I believe it's possible to do more than two polls per building. And I think it's important for us to have something that at least shows mass. That's one of the purposes of our story poll ordinance. So I would support any proposition that would require four to six polls per building and the augmented reality to substitute for the rest of those. proposition that would require four to six polls per building and the augmented reality to substitute for the rest of those. Um, you know, a few things have transpired here tonight. The augmented reality has morphed a bit from what was originally proposed to us. Uh, I heard tonight it's now a, a video, which means it would not change when you move around, it would still have that fixed location for viewing. Um, and I am a little concerned that as this has developed in front of the city here, uh, it's been a little ambiguous and each time it develops, uh, I'm not seeing it moving in the right direction. Um, I think we've had a story poll ordinance here for a long time. Um, and, and yes, the guidelines were revised in 2021 to allow for less story polls in the event that they can't be done safely in the event that they get in the way of, of, uh, occupied sites and such. So I think there needs to be some leniency here. Um, but in my opinion, two polls per building is just too loose. So I don't know if I have support of the other fellow, my other fellow council members, but if any of you would consider four to six polls per building, I can get on board with that.
I thought.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go. I'm sorry.
Mayor Pretten.
I thought we were told that there was a utility plan provided that showed that more couldn't go because these are being dug underground.
It's complicated because of the fact of all the other gun, all the underground utilities. So it restricts where they can actually locate each poll or how many polls. Um, I'm also just looking at the plan. Each utility poll, even if it is, even with the utility polls that are buried, they are still proposing to put a fence around it because they want to make sure that that utility poll is properly secured and not accessible. So.
You mean story poll?
Yeah, story poll, utility poll. I'm, 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 I'm saying utility poll now because that's what we've been mostly discussing, which is a utility poll acting as a story poll in this case. Um, but it still has a disruption and there is still an area around it that would be fenced off and some parking that would be closed. So I would estimate anywhere from two to six parking spaces per utility poll would have to be closed off with a fence around it. So if you try and do four to six utility pulls on each building, that would only, you know, exponentially increase the number of parking areas within that shopping center that would be impacted.
Well, I have now a question based on what Peter said and then what you said. Michael, you gave a number of a hundred and some odd parking spaces being impacted. Is that total or is that if we just added two or four? I mean, how, where are you reaching that number?
A hundred and forty is if, if the council requested the traditional story poll plan, which called for a poll at every single corner on the building and then having to put a fence around the entire story poll area. That's the hundred and forty some on parking.
Okay, but that's thirty five polls then.
Yeah.
Okay. So the question that I had asked, or that somebody had asked, I thought was adding two story polls would be how many more spaces affected? Two story polls on the, on that building B or whatever you're calling that one in the outer, in the inner.
Well, interior. I guess I'm also not clear a, as what's being referred to by council member Kraut. Are you talking about two more polls to this area? Or are you talking about four polls on each one of these blue buildings?
Yeah, I'm aware that since the beginning of this presentation with the first planning commission meeting, that the collection of four buildings in the parking lot is referred to as building B.
Correct.
And when we say four to six polls per building, I believe the direction and I would be comfortable with four to six polls for that cluster of buildings. Calling that one, so four to six polls in the parking lot. That's what I'm proposing.
So adding two more polls to that part, that building B would be how many more spaces impacted?
Like I said, I would estimate anywhere from two to four parking spaces, but that comes with that caveat of that hasn't, I don't know where exactly they can put two or three more polls.
Okay. So four to eight more spaces if you added two polls.
Potentially. Um, again, the, the reason this plan was developed was because the idea was that the virtual reality was intended to depict the mass and the bulk of the building. The proposed polls, utility polls are intended to represent the height of the buildings. Unless you specifically put a, a utility poll at each corner of each one of those buildings, it's not going to demonstrate what is going on out there. It's not going to give a depiction of the mass of the project. It's going to be completely inaccurate and, uh, not a proper representation.
Well, it, I don't know. It's just, it's a very close call on that, on that element of it. I'm, I'm not unhappy with the, uh, two story polls on the, on the existing structure. That I think is adequate. I, I don't know about the, in the, uh, building D as we're calling it.
Looking further.
I'm just giving a very close call on that one. I, I don't know.
Mayor Pretten, line two.
No, I just thought the whole thing from the beginning was the underground utilities. And that that's the reason for the number that's being proposed.
That is the primary concern is that with the underground utilities, it limits where and how many polls they can install on the project site.
So I imagine that there's some plan that shows that this is the, the reason for that.
That was used in the, in the overall evaluation. It's also how they arrived at the, a little bit more of a specific location within, within this, within this plan versus what was submitted to the, in the packet.
Council member.
Michael, when they put these polls up, it's not going to go up one, two, three. There's going to be a lot of work, a lot of trucks, a lot of people. They gotta configure it, get it up. I'm not even sure how they'll do that. That's going to take, we're, we're, uh, counting parking spots. That alone over a period of time is going to occupy a number of parking spots. Again, my concern on this is not so much, um, is really primarily the safety issue of the whole thing. I mean, I can't get over that. You know, the safety of putting all this up, having all these construction workers around, having all these polls dangling around. Um, I, as I said before, I'm, I'm in favor of story polls. I like the idea. But on this particular project, it's just inappropriate. Uh, you're going to have to fumble around and look for, uh, where are good places to put the polls in? And there's still no guarantee when you go in, if it's going to be safe. You have to be cautious about that. And, uh, I, as you're describing the height of the polls where the polls where they may not going to be up against the building. Um, it's not really going to depict the, the depth of, of the building. It's really going to be more for height. Um, and the massing is what people want. Um, I don't know. See where we come with a compromise. I can't compromise on the safety aspect. I just can't. I wish I could, as I said, I'm for the polls, but, uh, when it comes to the safety aspect, this whole project, bringing it in, putting it up, it's going to be a mess. So tell me I'm wrong.
That, all of that went into the, the overall evaluation. Uh, like I said, the first thing that we looked at from a holistic standpoint, can they do all the story polls? Is it feasible or not feasible? And they, i- in staff's opinion, they've demonstrated that the site is not feasible to install all of the story polls. In fact, it's very difficult to install even a fraction of the story polls. So because of that, because ultimately you're not going to get the true depth or the true mass of the project based on putting up a handful of polls. The primary objective of demonstrating the mass and the depth of the buildings is through augmented reality and through a digital medium. From the planning commission meeting, the suggestion was to bring out polls to demonstrate the height of the building. So that was the direction that the applicant went was to figure out a creative solution to install something physical and still represent the height, recognizing that massing was, was not likely going to happen in this application. But also if the applicant is here, so some of these may be questions that should be directed to the applicant. They may have more information about the impacts that store, that either story poll option would have on the shopping center and the, the general parking.
Okay. Council member Kraut.
Thank you. Um, Michael, I appreciate the narrative. We've, we've had a lot of that tonight. I, I'm trying to get to the facts in two specific questions. So if you could help me out with a yes or no answer. There's a poll on the image in front of us that's shown it's a certain height, it's buried into the ground. Um, do you believe that that poll can be installed safely?
I actually would like to look at the city attorney to answer that question.
Has the applicant suggested that they can install that poll safely?
Yes.
Okay. Second question. With regards to the utilities, have you seen a utility plan that is so congested that there is not two more places in those blue shaded areas that two more polls could not possibly go?
I haven't seen a.
It's a yes, no. I'm sorry, Michael, I appreciate the narrative. We gotta get to the end of this. It's been a long hearing. Is there a utility plan that's so congested that you can't get two more polls in there?
No.
Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
I have to follow up on that because you started to answer one way and then I'm in depositions a lot too. So I, I know what it's like. Uh, you, you said no, that you haven't seen a plan, correct?
I've seen a utility plan that does show a handful of utilities in that area. Is it possible for them to install one or two more polls potentially? Um, also the utility plans are approximates, they're estimates. There could be other utilities that are running through there too, that, that are just not mapped on that plan. So I can't answer with a hundred percent clarity. But yeah, I'm sure they can install one or two more polls. Is it going to have the net effect of what is trying to be achieved, which is to show the overall mass of the buildings? I couldn't guarantee that at this time.
Okay. And you also mentioned earlier, one sec, please. Uh, you also mentioned earlier, I believe it was you, unless it was the applicant, issues of fire lanes and, and, uh, walkways that would be affected by any of the, uh, polls being put out there. I just want to confirm that. We saw it in the diagrams. There are fire hydrants and fire lanes as well.
That was raised and the, the traditional story polls have a much greater impact on the fire lanes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can make one further point, just to note, the story polls policy looks at feasibility more than just possibility, taking into account the six factors is listed in A through F.
Right. Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments, council members?
I was, can I say one, I was just going to say before we make a motion, the applicants here, if they wanted to comment one more time on the question that's being raised about the utilities.
Certainly would be welcome by the council, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please state your name again, if you would.
Uh, for the record, my name's Chris Robertson with Caruso. Um, yeah, so we have looked at a number of factors. When we originally proposed the conceptual locations of the story polls, we had those giant bubbles because we hadn't gone out to the site yet and thoroughly investigated utilities. We have as built and all that great thing. We have our proposed utility realignments. But as we all know, sometimes when you go out in ground truth, you discover additional things are out there, right? So we did that, which is why we, we originally had the pole on the, on the east side of building B up higher. We had to move that southward because there's a network of utilities. Likewise, we readjusted the pole on the left-hand side a little bit more and we had to move the pole behind building A on the east side, southward, because there are utilities. And because we do have to sink these poles about a little over six feet, we, we do run the risk of running into utilities. So it's a combination of that. It's all also the additional impact of the displaced parking. We have over 30 tenants on, on property with over 30 individual lease agreements and we can't do whatever we want, whenever we want. We have to honor those commitments that we've made to the tenants as well. But I think, you know, just to stress again, when the commission originally introduced the idea of introducing a pole or a physical representation, it was to illustrate the height of the building, as Mr. Klein mentioned. It has never been to illustrate the massing. When we went back to the commission for a second time, three commissioners agreed with that and three commissioners disagreed with it. But we've never suggested that these polls are going to illustrate the massing. That's the intent behind the augmented reality. And we believe that the augmented reality is going to better illustrate the massing than even the traditional story polls will. So you have, you know, two polls illustrating the maximum height that you'll be able to reference in conjunction with the augmented reality. And we feel really good about it. Um, just to touch on some comments about transparency and things like that usability that were made. One of the reasons that we transitioned to this newer augmented reality is because we do believe it's more user friendly and intuitive. Um, you won't need to sort of play around with unique technology. You'll scan a code, you'll be taken to a website and the video will pop up. So if you know how to use a QR code, um, that's, that's about all you need to do. And we'll also have instructions on the kiosks that show you how to, how to do a QR code if you don't know. Um, as this council knows, uh, housing element was recently approved by the city that designates the commons as one of the ideal locations for potential residential. Um, and as part of the response to HCD's comments, the council eliminated the community development forum process. We, we went above and beyond what a community development forum process would require numerous times by going out to the city entirely. We want to make sure that everybody is aware of this, hence the billboards and the continued outreach. It, it's fully our intent to make sure that this is transparent, user friendly, widely publicized. I don't think anyone in the city probably is unaware that something is being planned or envisioned for the commons.
Okay. Thank you. Any other council?
Yeah, I, I did, you know, I, I appreciate your comments very much. And part of my consideration in my vote is going to be that for the past 25 years, uh, Crusoe has been, um, one of the very few developers who actually seems to care about the city. Um, so I appreciate your comments. As far as HCD, I will tell you, and I want to state yet again up here, I don't recognize HCD's authority in the city anymore based on the fact that they interfered in the 2020 election cycle by illegally misappropriating state funds to campaign for a proposition. So what HCD says and does no longer has any weight of authority in the city as a matter of law. But I will not consider that in my vote tonight.
And as noted, tonight's vote is just story polls.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion since I, I think we've had, uh, um, a robust discussion. I'm going to make a motion to approve or request to modify the city's story poll requirements for a proposed mixed use project located at 4799 Commons Way.
And could I ask, would you consider adding a friendly amendment to that, which would include staff, uh, staffing at civic center on a set time to provide a virtual reality information?
Can we leave it to staff and the applicant to figure out like where and when? Cause I don't know.
Perfect. Yes.
The right time and place.
Is there a second for that motion?
Oh my gosh, my glasses broke, so I'm gonna, they look really funny, but I'm going to try it again. Okay. Call for review at the plant, oh, what?
bifocals.
Yeah, no, they broke. Um, okay, let's see. I'm making a motion to approve a request to modify the city's story poll requirements for a proposed mixed use project located at 4799 Commons Way. And then David asked for a friendly amendment to include a time and a place for additional assistance. And I asked if we could leave that to staff and the applicant to figure out the appropriate time and place. And then through our city, cities, through our own city channels to make sure if there's any issues that were notified so we can help, um, assist all residents to see what this project is.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion by council? Seeing none, uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nope. Passes four to one. Thank you, everyone, for being. Thank you, everyone, for being here and for this late hour of dealing with a very important issue. Everybody okay if we keep going? Good. Have to share up here. Okay, we've been asked, we'll take a three minute break until 10:30. We are back and it is 10:35 and we'll move on to the next item, which is item 12. And that is the City Council Direction on Law Enforcement Services Contract with the LA County Sheriff's Department. And we have a recommendation, a presentation from our city manager, Ken Demick. And we're very pleased to have here our captain, Jen C. Two here. As well as Deputy Di Matteo.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Let me see if I can transition here to there. We are to the screen share. I have a brief presentation as a follow up to our discussion in June. I'll go through this quickly, especially since I've lost the audience. And I'll move through quickly. Just as a review of our sheriff's basics, we contract with LA County Sheriff's Department for law enforcement services. And each year we're able to monitor and review and perhaps modify our service levels through the what is often returned referred to as the 575 document. In most cases, the city contracts for deputy service units. These are minutes and hours. In some instances, as we've talked about, there is an actual contract for a body or a position. And let me just go through that. This is a photo of the PDF of the 575. But most importantly, here's a summary of our service level for currently as proposed for fiscal year 2324 with nine deputy service units, one of those including a J Team Deputy, a grant special assignment deputy, that is our community liaison deputy, a motor deputy that we pay for a full motor deputy, a law enforcement tech which handles fingerprinting. That's a shared position with the five cog cities. And then a community services assistant position that we share the cost in at a half of a half of a body or a half of personnel. And our total cost for law enforcement services is just over 5.6 million for this upcoming fiscal year. At the last meeting, the council proposed some changes or modifications to the service level agreement, the 575. Those are noted below in the yellow. Initially, there was a a request from the council to increase patrol deputies by point five or a half of a deputy service unit that would come at a cost of about 279,000 to increase our grant special assignment deputy or our community liaison deputy from point 56, adding point 44 to make that a full time deputy liaison for our community that would come at an added cost of 111,000. Council proposed decreasing or reducing our motor deputy in half. That would be a savings of about 181,000. And then there was discussion about not funding the community services assistant. Council requested that staff meet with Captain C. Two, which we did follow up on several phone calls. And Captain C. Two graciously agreed to be here tonight to answer any specific questions. Just real quickly, in in the conversations that I've had with Captain C. Two, let me go through this list again. By adding a deputy sheriff for patrol, that point five increase, unfortunately, at this time, and the sheriff or the captain can talk more about this is that is very difficult, if not impossible to do because of the staffing levels in in a simple way that would be overtime on top of overtime to meet those minutes or those hours that would be necessary to fulfill that change in the contract, which we just can't, which the the station can't accommodate at this time. Captain C. Two does not see any concern with increasing the community liaison hours in in Calabasas. The motor deputy, again, five, reducing that by five, and then community services assistant. In speaking with the captain, her request would be that instead of eliminating or reducing that position, that that position be reassigned or utilized within the real time crime center that is being developed and and built out at the station. So with that, council members, I'm happy to answer any questions from you. And now so we'll be happy to turn the time over to Captain C. Two for any questions that the council would like to ask the captain.
Thank you very much. And I may have misstated. This is a continued item. So I'll turn to council comments or questions at this time. Council member Buzaj.
The the big question I have is, you know, last week, the California Court of Appeal reversed the decision by the Superior Court and reinstated Measure J, the defund the police measure that passed in 2020 by LA County voters. I'm proud to say that Calabasas defeated it, but there weren't enough Calabasas to overcome the rest of the county. So the question is, i- is this still viable at all? I mean, you're gonna have a 10% cut to your to law enforcement services under Measure J, a minimum of 10%. So how does that impact our ability to get additional services?
Thank you. Yes, actually, someone else asked me that question and tomorrow we have a division meeting to discuss that very thing to understand the impact. I am not, from what I've heard so far, that it will not directly impact the station as we are right now. I am already operating less than normal.
But when we, my my bigger question is not how it, I mean, obviously I'm concerned about how it affects us now. But when we put in a request for more services, are they going to come back and say at a higher level in the sheriff's department, sorry, we're we're making cuts at this time. We can't do that.
So right now with what was proposed, what the city manager proposed, that would be doable. We've even met with city manager and I met with our contract law folks. We ran this by them. The only thing that I would not be able to fulfill would be that point five of a deputy. That is one because anything that I add, I will not get any personnel from. So anything that's added will be on the backs. I keep saying on the backs of the deputies, but you understand that term that I use, meaning the deputies will be forced to work additional overtime, which is not something I'm willing to do right now.
Okay, because that's our main request, actually, on this chart. So if we can't do that. So what I'd what I'd ask is, and that's some bad news, of course. Once you have your debriefing or whatever on Measure J and that impact, could you please let the the general cities out here know? And also, when, I mean, is that a permanent thing? This increase cannot be met?
I know. So it, I did speak with with our county council, not a county council, or sorry, our contracts unit. And this was not specifically for Calabasas. This was for the Malibu Station being opened and looking at their contract and saying, okay, it's open. Now I need these gains in order to open up the station. And what I was told was the cities, at least contract cities, should have got a letter from the sheriff stating that right now we are at where there's a no growth moratorium on our personnel. And I believe the year that they put in that to re to relook at it was 2425. That was from my understanding that the letter went out to contract cities. Did you? Did anyone receive that letter?
I'll check on that, councilman.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Waindrop.
Thank you so much for being here so late. So you know, the main issues impacting our community and the residents are really concerned, especially about open space burglaries. So given the proposed contract and changes, not changes, are we adequately staffed to help in this subject area? And it's not subject area to, I'm sorry, to address these real concerns impacting our community.
So this is my stance on it. Having looked at this this problem, we can throw more and more deputies at it, right? For a huge, let's just say I have, the department had a lot of personnel, right? And we can throw more and more deputies at it, right? It will have impact, of course, you know, high visibility patrol, absolutely. But that's not, that's not where we're at right now. And so as your station captain, I gotta back up and say, what can I do right now? And that is why we looked at the Real Time Crime and Disaster Center. We sat with Beverly Hills. We took best practices from all over the United States, looking at the Real Time Crime Centers from all over, took their best practices, what they did right, what did they wrong, and then created our own center. I do believe that High Visibility Patrol works. I believe that I can't put a deputy at every single house that butts up to open fate, open space. I live in this community, meaning the five cities. My home opens up to open space. I'm well aware and and share the same fears that the residents here fear. And the best thing that I think we should look at is using technology. Technology to protect our communities, reaching out to our communities, talking about cameras, talking about lighting, talking about hardening hardening their 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 homes. If you guys remember, a year ago, I did, I I looked at all the stats for this jurisdiction, over 50% of my burglaries were to unlocked homes. I mean, that like, that blew my mind. And so we did a huge campaign literally for the last year, and now we're looking at the the information again, and we're happy to say that we're not seeing that same trend. And so it's about educating, working with the community, educating the community. And I do believe, I really do believe in this Real Time Crime and Disaster Center. I do believe that cameras will help. So that's that's where we're going to because we don't have those personnel.
Do you want it?
Counsel, if I can intervene or interject as well. One of the things that the council has directed and and staff is implementing is we're working with a private consulting firm to really enhance what the captain is talking about. In fact, we've had meetings just as of a week ago, week and a half ago, to start targeting those areas that have been most hit. We have identified at least three HOAs that have been predominantly hit over the last year and a half. And the city attorney is working with us on some legal agreements to help use that private consulting firm to employ some of the technology that the captain is talking about, which then will facilitate some of this efforts coordinated with the Real Crime Time, Real Time Crime and Disaster Center.
Thank you. Before I go on, I'll just follow up on the Real Time Crime Disaster Center. First, thank you again for being here tonight and always everyone at the station for keeping us all safe. We met and went through that and talked about it and we're very excited about it. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for the community, not just our city, but also our city and residents. When do you think or anticipate that will be? Hopefully up and running. We're gonna put you on the spot a little.
You know, you would think that this being privately funded and it would cut through all the red tape and I could just give the console or give the the vendor money and start this. Unfortunately, I've ran into some red tape and it has to do with signing an agreement. And so I am working with our county council right now. So even though I have the money to do this, which is privately funded, I hit some red tape. And so we're trying to work through the county council with that right now. So we're looking to be 30 or 90 days out is what, so the second I sign that agreement, or whoever gets to sign that agreement. We are about 90 days out. I've already approached the school district to talk about Mayor Protem Waintrib, you know, schools are near and dear to my heart and your heart as well. And I know the whole council. But we've had many conversations about our schools. And so that is something that I wanted to target first was our schools. And so I've had some great conversation with Dr. Stefanoski on this. And so we're trying to work on an MOU to send over hit to him so he can start reviewing it. But we're we're looking at 90 days from the day I sign the contract.
Okay, well, anything we can help to facilitate signing contracts, I'm sure we're excited about. Thank you, council member Kra. Well, first of all, thank you for all of that information and encouragement with the Real Time Crime Center. We're looking forward to that. I guess I'll go on a different track than the community liaison deputy increasing from point 56 to 1.0 is one of our other items here. I understand that if we did that, we might not necessarily get Deputy De Matteo full time. It might be a mix of other individuals. Could you tell us a little bit more about that?
So you, the council and the city manager will have an opportunity, whether it's De Matteo full time or you want to explore another person coming in. We do have someone that has been at the station for many years, has a great background, knows this community. And I think he would, he would do exceptionally well here in Calabasas. And so providing two different perspectives, two different ways of doing law enforcement. And I believe his schedule is where he would be here on a, on one day of the weekend. Don't quote me on that, but that's what I believe. So it kind of provides a little bit more flexibility. So it's just an option and so I'm open to to having conversation and it gets a little complicated because we we, Calabasas, shares Deputy De Matteo with Hidden Hills. So it's kind of wonky. That's a word.
Thank you for all of that. I appreciate it. But we, if we keep him here past 1110, he stays full time.
Yeah.
Council member Alber.
Hi, thank you very much for the report and no, I've seen the Real Time Crime Center with you when we were in the desert together for a conference with the contract cities and it was pretty amazing. And I look forward to the time when we can review it for results and make comparisons from period to period. So excited to see that up and running. I was just curious about if you see some areas that maybe you would suggest to redeploy. We seem to be on the defense right now, naturally, and for good reason. But maybe we can redeploy somehow to go on the offense a little bit.
Yes. And so we've, we've looked at this, we've you know, it's, it's hard. We did get mountain bikes that we have gone out on and they're electric mountain bikes where we patrolled the open space. You know, we, high visibility, of course, they see us and then they go to a different neighborhood or they say, oh, not today. We'll come back when they're not out there. So it's, it's, it's tough. It's tough when you, when you do provide that that overt policing, because then they just go in, they go to a a different city, you know, or they come back at a different time. We are, we just got our our, what are these called? Motorbikes. So not only do we have the electric mountain bikes, we do have gas motorbikes as well that will be deployed. I think in the next two weeks where we can use them out on the trails as well. Again, it's high visibility. It'll deter people from hitting that day. But I want a, I want a long term solution. And from what I've studied, from what I've seen, especially my good friend is the chief of police of Beverly Hills. What I've seen is is it's the cameras. It's the cameras that help. It's the cameras that detect, that send us early notifications where we can go intervene and stop the crime, you know, take people to jail. Like, that's what what we want to look at. That's where we want to get to. Thursday, the sheriff, last Thursday, the sheriff was came by our our station. We were so happy to have him. And there was this kind of surprise. We had a meeting at Pepperdine and then he said, hey, let's go to your station. And so we took him around the station and we showed him the center. And yeah, it's not done yet, but all the monitors are up on the wall. The building is built, the electricity is, and so you can kind of see what it's going to look like of this command center. And he was just like, this is, this is the route that we need to go. We need to be smarter in law enforcement. We need to use technology to help law enforcement, especially when we are suffering. And this is not just LA County Sheriff's Department. This is across the nation is they can't hire enough police officers across the nation. And so this is one way to be able to do it. And this, the, this center will be will be monitored by Covered Six. So you guys are already familiar with. So you guys are already familiar with covered six in our schools as well, as well as Hidden Hills. And so we don't know what the hours will be because again, this will be privately funded. And I gotta kind of look at the, the bank account to see how much money we have left after we purchased the software.
One more quick question. I know this is up out of, out of the ordinary. But in the service, they can detect body heat. There's some types of devices that in the dark, they can detect it. Well, I'm not sure what distance that could be because they're coming in from the dark and they're climbing over the fences or the hedges or whatever they're doing to get up to the second floor. Maybe we can, how, what's the range of that body detection and maybe plant-like cameras in the night? And then through the crime center, it can be viewed and deputies can be deployed in advance of someone taking.
Yeah. So we're not really looking at the heat, but we're taking that like, for example, and this is the why behind it. We've used a drone and not we, because we're not allowed to, but somebody's used a drone and did, picked up heat off of our rock. Sometimes it gets so hot here, they picked up the false sense of heat. And that's what we don't want to do, but there's a different technology we can use that is motion. Basically think of game cameras, like hunting cameras, and that will pick up motion of a large game. And then you can actually start teaching the, the cameras. Okay, that is a deer. That is a mountain lion, even though we do want to be notified when mountain lions come into the community, but we can start teaching the cameras this. And that's what they've done around Hidden Hills. We've literally had zero burglaries in Hidden Hills because their whole community is surrounded by a type of these cameras. And that's what I'd like to do for, you know, my whole community. It'll be a small, it'll be a slow rollout. We're not going to take on the whole community at first. It'll be, so we're going to start with our schools, where our religious institutions that would like to participate and our strip malls, who would like to participate. We'll try that out first, work out the kinks, and then we will continue to expand.
That would be nice. And demonstrating from a small rollout, a broader rollout would really be very prompt. If it's successful, which it sounds like it would be.
And I know another option, just bring up, and I'll stop is whether it's private or through the sheriff's department, which I know you're working on is potentiality for drones, which also can pick up heat sensor that way as well, right?
Yes. So we will be the first station to have a drone program. And so we're very, very proud of that. It's gone through the COC and thank you very much to the city of Calabasas for providing letters and support and really trusting us that we're going to do the right thing and it's to protect our community. And so this one will not be used for crime. Initially, it will be used for search and rescue vehicles over the side, crime scene, crime scene, pictures where we can quickly open roads on fatalities. So to be used for stuff like that. They're working on the policy right now and we're hoping to see something soon. I did, my drone expert Sergeant Brandon Painter, we did meet with a company today to discuss using drones during our red flag days. And that is something that I'm very interested in using, not me as the sheriff's department, but possibly if the supervisor, we're trying to pitch this to Supervisor Horvath about using drones. They have these drones now and they use them in Northern California that they can detect the heat, they can detect the fires and it's, it could actually be livestreamed into our, our center. And this, you know, quick notification of fires, that's the most important, especially when we have Topanga is such a critical part of our community is Topanga.
Thank you. City Manager Meek.
Thank you, Mayor. I did fail to mention a couple of things. Councilman Buzagian, it's your request and then supported by your peers, we did take this to the Public Safety Commission. I presented the same information on the sheriff's contract. They're supportive of the direction the council is moving. They do encourage, you know, all types of efforts that the council and the, and the city can implement, whether that's technology, consulting with outside security firms, whatever that might be. And so again, the, the Public Safety Commission was very supportive of the direction that was headed and ended to not provide any additional comments or, or recommendations. Mayor Protem Waintribe, also, I just wanted to follow up. You had asked about our camera network and Tony Yin is working with Sergeant Painter on, on the captain's team to integrate that. As the captain mentioned, there is a list of priorities with schools, religious institutions, commercial entities. But we want to be ready that when that time comes that the captain says, hey, we now can take cameras that are existing on our intersections or wherever that I might be, we have that, that transfer over. And so we've been working on that.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments, questions, Mr. City Attorney?
Very briefly, wanted to also note on the drone side that the city's own drone program, separate from the county, a little bit looser of a set of requirements because reflecting our more nimble, smaller, more nimble. We are looking at using our existing drone program together with our private theory consultant in targeted areas of the city for informational awareness.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other council comments, questions? Do we have direction at this point?
Do we need to make a motion or what?
It's just direction.
So Council of, just to summarize, I think where the, where we're headed is based on the, the recommendations, with the exception of the extra patrol deputy, we would move forward with more staffing from the community liaison, reducing the motor deputy and then as the captain requested, using that, that community services analyst in that real time crime and disaster center.
Any further, yes, Councilmember Kraut.
Yeah, just one question. If we can't increase the deputy sheriff, do we really want to reduce the motor deputy?
That would be up to the council.
Question too.
So I, I would, I would suggest that, you know, if we, if we don't drop, if we can't get a deputy sheriff, we would keep the increase in the special assignment deputy, which is 111 670. We would not decrease the motor deputy. And I think as discussed here, we would have our community services assessment reassigned to the technology program. So it would be approximately the same added cost. It would be $155,000 add instead of $165,000 add. But I can't see reducing the motor deputy. I think the reason we talked about doing that was to offset the increase in the deputy sheriff.
Correct. I support that, not changing the motor deputy.
Until such time as things change.
Right. Once they've changed, then we can use those funds elsewhere. I agree.
So I'd also like to make, reemphasize, I'd like to get updates on what the status is of this. Projections in the future when the timeline would change.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much again for hanging with us. And now we've reached the time so we get to keep Deputy De Mateo.
That was 11:10.
Yeah, it is somewhere, somewhere. All right. We'll move on to informational reports to check register for the period, June 17th to 28th, 2023. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll move on to task force reports. I'll start with Councilmember Albert.
Got one task force that we've been working on. I've been working on with Councilman Kraut and that's Headwaters Corner. And we're determined to come to a contract lease agreement with them in the near future and hope to get some reports on the success of that. Very soon.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kraut.
Like other council members, I met with our records retention people here at the city to review our policy and where we're going with that. That was very informational and I think we're going to see some positive things come out of that. Just as a quick report on that, everything is in the history. A long time ago, for the records that have been lost, there are things that we can't repair, but the policies and procedures moving forward are sound and solid. And I think if our staff continues to adhere to those, we're in great shape. I think a further report is probably forthcoming. I also attended the League of California Cities Installation Dinner and I'll go ahead and steal his thunder and report that Councilmember James Buzagian was sworn in as the state representative on the board for LA, representing LA County on the state board. Very high honor. Congratulations, Councilmember.
Congratulations. Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Buzagian, on that note.
Well, since I don't have to announce it myself, I attended the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Annual Meeting on behalf of the city and, and just, it just, it was just a routine vote. There were no contested issues, just the board was reelected. The Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center was also represented separately by Jim Bukowski, board member. There was also a community center board meeting here on July 27th. And we're making continued progress, which you've gotten reports on regarding the roof repairs and other repairs to the center. So we'll continue to give you updates as, as appropriate. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mayor Protem Waindrop.
I attended an economic development meeting through the Valley Economic Alliance, talking about some regional economic development projects that are not in Calabasas, but will have broader regional impacts. So we will be tracking those. We had a cog meeting where some legislation came up. So hopefully we'll be able to bring that back to the council, just some things that we're monitoring at the cog and that we should be doing so as well.
Thank you. And I have a bunch of them. I attended a number of SCAG meetings, one of which related to a ruling. I provided a copy of that to our city attorney, city manager and council. The, pertaining to the housing element lawsuit and the appellate court. Attended Valley Economic Alliance Board Meeting as well. FICA, which is supposed to be tomorrow for local office holders, is going to be in, moved to September at some point in large part due to the strikes at that particular hotel. And I attended the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce Attorney Forum and the Mayor's Youth Council, which has another meeting tomorrow with some very, Monday, I'm sorry, Monday. I don't know what day it is. Okay. It'll have some very exciting things to talk about next meeting. Does the city manager have anything to report?
Mayor, just a couple of items. First of all, thank you to each of you for your support and attendance at the Fourth of July events. And a big thank you to our community services department for just a great day. It was a wonderful day all, all around and they did an excellent job. This morning, we held a meeting with all of our city employees and swore them in as disaster service workers. As we've been working on our emergency operations training and we've realized that some of our staff did not realize that they were in essence, disaster service workers and would be required to be around for a disaster. And so we, we were doing some training with them and tapping into the talents and skillsets of all of our employees on that. And then finally, this is just a little bit, I think it's something, it's something that's been important to me for a while and excited to report that you'll now start seeing your code enforcement officers, your building and safety personnel and your public works maintenance team in uniforms. And we've created a standard uniform for each of those groups. You'll see three different uniforms with a logo on the shirt and very professional looking. And so when they're out in the community, they look sharp, they look great and it's, it's good to see that. So.
Can we see a mock-up? Do we vote on that? Okay. Thank you. Are there any requests for future agenda items, information items? Mayor Protem Waindrop.
I was just wondering if there's support for that, something to go to the Environmental Commission? Basically for them to develop or work with staff on a program to recognize residents who have like transitioned their property to, bless you, whether it's like drought tolerant, like sustainable homes to recognize residents who have gone above and beyond on that to develop some sort of program, but let the Environmental Commission work on it. So.
I would just add to that. I would support that and also include the, bring back a program we had years ago, which was to support our, recognize the businesses as well.
The green business, the green business program. So to have, to rewrite, bring back the one we created for businesses and then also for residents.
So I will second that. I guess that's what we're looking for. Thank you. Anything else?
I, I did notice again that the issue of the airplane noise and routes is on the future agenda item list, but I would remind everybody, it's, I made the request initially in January. This is the fifth request I've made. It really does need to get put on some date. The other thing was Matt, I believe at one of the times I requested, there were two other council members who said, who seconded it. So wouldn't that mean it goes on a, very quickly on a list?
Yeah, I'm not sure if we had a date set, but I think we can bring back a report to the council expeditiously.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. At that point, we'll adjourn at 11:10. And City Council will adjourn in memory of Peter Falk tonight to regularly schedule meeting next on Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM in Chambers. Thank you.